Well, it is nine o'clock. So everyone turn your mic to phone on please and put your cell phones on mute. All right, typing that in quick, I'll call the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation of the clear government in the physical with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call please.
Joe.
Here.
Gary.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
And.
Here.
Here. Item number three, does anyone have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
I do that.
No. Leave my options open as usual.
No. Item number four is approval of agenda.
Are we, are we, is this a, are we just discussing meal tags or what, when did we run that today?
It's on the agenda, so we can certainly vote on it. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
We'll approve of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to approve the agenda for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries, agenda is approved. At this time, we will have public comment. Would anyone care to make a public comment?
Commissioner Swetson.
Just one real quick thing, I won't even bother, didn't stand up in the room. Last, but the meeting, made the comment from people that's kicked through every day. No new taxes. Freeze wages for the economy for two years till we get things under control after two floods, pandemic, and who knows what else has come in the rest of the six months of this year and next year. That's just a word from the street, criminal, completely word, telling me what be to convey to you. The taxes are too high already. Thank you.
At this time, public comment is closed. Moving on, item number six, discussion on provisional budget. So our goal today is to essentially finalize our provisional budget so the auditor can advertise it in August and then we approve it in September. So platform is essentially open. I have down here some things we most likely need to adjust today. Capital expenditures, salaries, and discretionary spending. And then on the agenda, for item seven is a wheel tax. Where would we like to begin?
Do you want to just go line by line and, you know, start with maybe the departments and then to the other?
Let's see. So as far as the auditor, do you want to start with the auditor then? I think that's the first tab in everyone's book.
Then Commissioner.
Oh, you're right Dan, I skipped by that, there wasn't a tab.
It can come back to that one because that one does involve, doesn't that involve like the voices?
That it does, yeah.
So we want to.
Did, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt. Did I give you the voice and birth of instead of? Did I get a copy of that?
How do you want me to go print it?
Yeah. They changed that.
Yep.
Actually, actually, they.
They were asking.
They were major, they were a commission.
Yeah, and they were asking for the 20,000, I'm pretty sure at that meeting.
What, you want to come back to the commissioner? Commissioner want to just go with auditor? That probably wouldn't be a better place to start this auditor.
That's fine, let's go to the auditor. I don't believe the auditor have requested any capital spending. Anyone have a reason to request changes to the auditor's request?
I think it looks good. I don't really see any, any areas I disagree with with the auditor.
Pretty straightforward, yeah. Just to base it, usually are productive officials.
Next is treasurer.
Same on this one, I didn't see anything that was out of line or anything that I disagree with on treasurer.
All right, there being no concerns boys, we'll go to the state's attorney.
Now, this one reflects the addition of, of that person helping with welfare, is that correct?
I.
How is that going to be incorporated?
Rob is assigning that to a current employee. The one thing that is reflected in this is Tara, who had been working part-time with the ambulance service, is now full-time with the state's attorney. So he did essentially being a half-time person into his budget. But he did know during their presentation that, to admit, his assistant state's attorneys essentially left this year and replaced them with two others, one being at a lower salary. So that's why you don't see a huge increase in salaries for his department.
Yeah, I also have that change.
Is that, is the addition of the half-time employee that, are they going to be focused pretty much on poor relief? Completely then, or is that the position that was added, I know they worked with ambulance part-time and states turned part-time. We've contracted out the ambulance building out. So what is that person going to be doing?
Well, they are absorbing the poor relief per state statute. So, and that is expected to be 20, 30 hours a week.
What, what are we going to have them do that, they are full-time employees, so what are they going to be doing?
What they were doing.
They were bill collection.
So.
Yeah, this, that other portion of it wasn't ambulance related necessarily. So it was property accident.
You know, that's something like horrible, the legal.
That's, that's fine, I just didn't ask them. That makes sense.
I guess they're essentially going to continue what they were doing, but then taking on the addition of. They said.
Just want to make sure, you know, we're with, we're not really adding somebody, but kind of our employee that we have to be over employee and keep us to provide the expense. So that's my question because reality is, we did contract with the agency with you ambulance collection now, so that, there's a cost to that too. I want to say so.
I guess you spend 20 to 30 hours. And actually.
I think with police, yeah.
I think state bosses, the state's attorney needs to handle that over.
If your, if your population is over 15,000, the state's attorney must designate someone in their office to do that.
Do we, is that something that we should do as a, not just, I know it's in state law, but could we make a motion to, to do that, to transfer that to the state's attorney's office with the, just being, I'm almost in bed. But we, as a condition, agreed to that, make a motion to trans for that, I mean, we certainly. It's in the law.
Any other concerns with state's attorney's proposed budget?
Just like to note that state's attorney and his two assistants secretaries are requesting a two and a half percent increase in wages. And they only have about $80,000 a year. And people today, there's nobody here who represents state, put a camera over their other table. There's nobody here from the state's attorney office. But they still want that two and a half percent raise with a $80,000 a year paycheck. It's real easy to figure, two and a half percent, $80,000, a lot of money. Some of the poor people can't connect. Couldn't be other than these male for state's attorney over there. Not with my name on it, of course, but so the people watching at home know who is over there. Sometimes Deb is over there, Deb, the new gal. And sometimes Rob is there, so just identify them. These poor people that watch this on TV, it's hard enough for them to hear somebody with a mask on, let alone try to identify these people when they're in and off. I object to the two and a half, she's already making $80,000 a year. It's a little bit too much money.
So as we go through, every department has put in a two and a half percent raise for their employees and that is one of the discussions later on, after we go through all these, is to finalize the salaries and whether it stays at two and a half percent or goes to zero or whatever. So that discussion will happen. So the state's attorney is not the only one who put it in there, be clear. Any other concerns with state's attorney or is this fine? We will move on then. Next tab is the government building safety center. So there are two. The government building is first.
Looks pretty straightforward to me. Jeff did mention he's got some repair projects to do. The lights on our memorial, that the memorial, you know, need to be repaired. And then there was some windows, you know, was that something?
No, the hero at the safety center.
Did that all come out of the two, three, three, the government building?
I think there was a change in this one. Salary or transfer from safety center, but vice versa.
Yeah, for the, the 29th year showed the zero.
Yeah.
And it looks like the current budget was fixed to share those, so.
If you combine both.
Yeah. And that was because we get reimbursed from the city.
Right.
Any other concerns with either of these two? All right, we will move on. Next is director of equalization.
Does, I don't agree with the, the $5,000 for professional services, that's a note that I have in here. And it's never been used before. I know they budgeted like a thousand dollars in the past, but I think 5,000 is excessive. I guess I would support a thousand dollars for that and if they were needing it for some other reason, I guess we can always transfer funds in, but I guess I can't see why they need that.
Everly, her reasoning for putting that in there was anticipating litigation associated with some of the parcel valuation changes.
But it's never, it's never been, it never used anywhere near that before. I mean, you can't anticipate what might happen. And if that does happen, then we transfer the money in. I guess adding it there, just to say, add it there, it's not, I think it'd be abusive to tax dollars.
Yeah, too.
Because it, because it, you know, in all likelihood, they won't use it. But if it is there, it's a lot easier to use it. So I guess I wouldn't, I would, I would go back to the thousand dollars that they had in the past, I'm fine with that. But I don't support a huge increase in it just because something could possibly happen maybe. So that's my, my take on it because if, if we're going to do that, maybe we should put $5,000 in everybody's account or something that might happen.
That's true, what you, yeah. And then once it gets in there, it's 5,000, next year will be 5,000. Next year is 5,000, and next year is 10,000, so maybe we'll use it, maybe we'll, you can't, you can't, unless somebody's got a crystal ball. Well, I agree with you, the thousand's plenty.
The year-to-date actual is $35. And, and when that money is sitting in there not being used, then that's money that is not being spent on roads. It's not being spent on bridges, it's not being spent on other things. And if a situation arises that they need further funding, then that's when we transfer it, we'll take care of the food.
Other comments?
Yes, I agree, I think their concern justified, but I would just assume not happening.
What proposed amount instead of five?
I think that thousand dollars would be appropriate for that. And that's what was budgeted last year, and I can't, would support that.
Any other proposals?
But like Dan said, you could, they need something they can ask for later on, put it back to zero. So we got an extra thousand for the roads or something else. Just money tied up, just laying there, just waiting for something to light up.
Is the general consensus a thousand?
I would, I would score a thousand.
All right, Patty, making note to change that to a thousand, put that in red here. Other comments on equalization?
For repair and maintenance, they had a lot of that on vehicles and thus, I totally understand that. Have we discussed or is it possible that we put out bids to, you know, some of these maintenance shops? Or I know even some other counties take their vehicles to the highway department. I know our highway department's busy as well, but is there a way we could reduce the repair and maintenance? I know a lot of it, some of it does on websites and this, some of it is on vehicles. I didn't get the breakdown on that. But is that something we could work at, that's like maybe bidding out vehicle maintenance?
So my understanding was repairs and maintenance included Beacon, Probell, NCO, Marshall and Swift, GIS, Microfilm Imaging, Miller Consulting, Esri. Those were the outside, Patty.
I believe vehicle, the outside was there are some vehicle expenses and I don't have that breakdown. But no matter what it is, if we could save money and make it more efficient, I, I don't know if that's something, maybe we could do bids for all the departments with, you know, a repair shop. And maybe that way we save some money because I believe that is now a very imperative among, is it, they just take it to wherever, right?
That it's.
So it's, and that's good in the fact that we're spreading out our business in town, but it's also maybe not so good is if we do more business with somebody, they're probably going to give us a better deal. I don't know how much we can save, maybe not a whole lot, but it's maybe something we can explore.
So are you looking at trying to change the 46,300 today or you're trying to get a general statement forward?
I'm not looking at, at doing that. One of the notes that I had when we interviewed this is that a portion of the 46,300 is for vehicle maintenance. And maybe that's something that we could look at moving forward is, is, you know, we discussed it last night and with our conflict of interest policy that we signed, we probably need to look at doing bidding on some of this stuff. So it's more of a general statement, I'm, I'm fine with it. That's what the number, because a lot of this is for software.
Oh, Dan, that's, that's a good thing, Rob, but I just want to give you an example. When I managed a company up in Sioux Falls, I had 85 vehicles on the highway. And when I came, their maintenance was out of sight. So what they were doing, same thing we're doing, we'll take it, shoot it, drive it, we'll take it to Firestone, whatever. So I went around and I, I went to several different companies, so it's basically three. And, and I got them to bid on oil change, I got them to bid on transmission repair, I got a bid on a brake job. And, and they, they had that locked in and they were real competitive with each other. And I finally selected one and we took all vehicles there and the advantage to that. We take your pickup Ford and they do something to it and then maybe later on you take it to Firestone or Walmart. There's the same thing wrong with it and they fix the thing again where there was probably a warranty on it. Sometimes it's impossible you're out of town, but that was away with me. But I tried to find a repair shop that was actually live because my vehicles were in 36 states. So I think it's a really good idea, man. We can trim down expenses, we can get these dealerships to get a locked-in price because if they know they've got our business, they'll be able to discuss, they'll give us a deal and we'll be able to get our vehicles in and out because they shot, we get them done instead of, hey, you know, one from the county and one from the city, so what? Good idea, Dan, thank you.
So the next would be registered D's and this is actually two pages before the veterans tab. I'm missing ROD tab. Everybody got it?
No.
You do, okay, I'm, I'm just missing one in my mind. You're fine.
You've got the sheet correct.
Yeah.
I don't see anything I disagree with in the registered D's. Straightforward and very well done.
Any other comments on registered D's? All right.
And then that, and also Brian is the, everyone, you know, the register.
Brian and.
EPR.
Oh, yeah, okay. So the M and PR. And there's plenty of money in that fund to cover that seven for sure. So that's okay as well.
Also modernization.
Yeah.
And you can always spend certain things.
So next up is veterans service officer. Really straightforward, any changes to this?
You got it? Oh.
Remember last night when my associate, the veteran service officer spoke of the veteran that had suicide on the steps of the VA? I found the article from the VA, even on, the document that was accurate, that came from me.
Sheriff is next up. We will pay the veterans and the sheriff actually has a couple of different ones. Let's start with the actual sheriff. Any concerns with what is being requested? It's very similar to the current budget for 2020.
Only notes I have is fuel and I understand it's that from the city of New England.
Yes, he made that statement last time.
We don't pick that out or just ask any question, do we? Does the city sell that to us at their cost? We don't.
I understood that that would be the case, I give the air pressure.
It sounded like Jim felt the price was very competitive. And location is very convenient.
I guess my concern, you know, is with what we approved last night for the bidding process, you know, now are we going to have to get something like that out?
The. What we approved last night, I don't think much changed.
We, we essentially adopted state law last night and federal guidelines.
You know, there, for what you guys approved last night, I could, it's got to be one, a previous one on our part, I think it'll take two.
Is everyone okay with the sheriff? All right, we will move to the next one, which is county jail. Any other concerns of county jail? Next one is juvenile detention.
Only note I have on juvenile detention is under rentals where, I know that's all over the place. You know, it's over 100,000 in 2019, it's 22,605 in 2017, and we're going up to 100,000.
That's the juvenile, that's what it's about.
Do we, do we want to keep it at 100 or would 90 be better? I know we budgeted for 76,000 last year.
You identified an individual.
So the projection for year end is 170,000 for 2020. So I, I feel 100,000, if anything, we should increase it. So Jim's obviously stabbing in the dark on this.
Yeah, well then there's no way to, it's just that.
So I guess it, with the theory, we just applied the equalization, we can move it to 1,000 because we don't know. And I think 100,000 is wiser.
We always have to supplement them.
Yeah.
Decided anyway.
So I'd rather it be in the budget because if we do have to supplement, then that truly does come out of our cash reserve.
All right, this is going to be close to 100 and not go away now.
Yep. So. So
I'm fine. I got, I just again, when we give these reports, I write down a few notes.
The next is sobriety fund. And that one seems really consistent. Any concerns with the twenty-four seven sobriety?
Hold on, I don't care. Watch as this, there's state funding for
Yeah.
Is that program suspended? Is that one suspended from that?
Okay. So I got a separate tab for, oh, that was from his. Okay, nevermind. So next up is the jail. I just already did that. So there's my, oh, I see. I see. I put Jim's thing in my thing. So I got some with that. Sorry. Yeah. Just to be, so I didn't lose everything. I put his inserts in here. So coroner, my apologies, coroner's up next.
Nice. You have no idea. I mean, we'll have to supplement that picture. You just don't know how many autopsies will be in the year.
I'm, I'm fine with the coroner.
Maris. There was, I did have marked here under the personnel group insurance, if you'll notice. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen was zero, twenty nineteen was zero. And now we have, is that because of the status of an employee?
No, that was, it was called and wrong.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Now it'll be
Now it's correct. Okay. Wonderful. Otherwise I didn't have any other notes there. Ambulance is next on the list. There is a note at the bottom of the capital accumulation request for fifty. So right now there is ninety-six thousand available in the capital accumulation for ambulance.
Didn't we, you conceived in and presented the budget? Weren't we gonna reuse the next ambulance that was up for replacement? Was a newer one where we were going to reuse the box on. So it wasn't, it wasn't going to cost as much as the one prior to it. So I guess I, you know, fifty thousand that probably come down to some, I would think.
My understanding was he reuses the body, the box.
Yeah.
I think he likely would. If we look at in twenty nineteen, we replaced box and chassis. That was a hundred and fifty.
And
For chassis, we have a lot less. Twenty sixteen, we replaced just the chassis. For other twenty-five thousand, a hundred and one four thousand.
Yeah. So I had a note here. It's about twenty thousand less with no box.
And, and the next one that's scheduled for replacing is a premium box on.
One scheduled for replacement.
And twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-fourth in the chassis was a full six box. I think we would like to keep that box.
Yeah.
There's a ninety-seven box. I think a lot of different I don't know if, if, if everything else, if they get lighter material and whatnot, but they did just everything. If I remember right, he said we probably get five.
So if we're looking at a capital expenditure in twenty twenty-two of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I'm assuming they'll probably go up a little bit. And we currently have ninety-six thousand in there. My math is right. We need about thirty thousand dollars more in that account.
Yeah, I've got a note with the fifty indicating to a hundred and forty-six. I think that's I remember that was going to be if we just replaced the chassis.
They're replacing it in the twenty twenty-two budget.
That's it.
So if, yeah, I mean, so I think if we did fifteen, even if we did twenty this year or twenty next year, that should be more than enough to cover it. But I guess I'm want to hear what other people have to say. I hate to put in fifty thousand this year, fifty thousand next year, and then we have a hundred thousand dollars to sit in there. Which is, I mean, we, we did fifty this year, fifty next year. We got a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in there for a hundred and forty, a hundred and thousand dollar chest.
If we didn't say twenty-five this year, we could give some calls and that gives us a ballpark for next year and put the remainder I think that we'd be funded for that replacement.
I agree with that. He said, yeah, that's the twenty-five. What was you?
Oh, kind of down to twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So a capital by so going forward, if you take that, you know, the theory, you have to look at, in my opinion, is how long does it last? Every, every three years do we replace one or do we do it every four? And if it's every three years and say it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars used to equipment, you need to be putting like fifty thousand per year. If it's every four years, for example, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars used to equipment, then you need to be putting around thirty thousand. So that's kind of the idea is to balance all of those out.
Yeah, have it consistent.
So I'm
Year, if we, even the twenty twenty-two, if we replace it, if there's money left over, that's
And that's
You still want to have
You hate to have the hundred and fifty thousand in one though. Yeah. So I'm with you, Joe. Let's look at it again next year. The twenty-five thousand should be fine. So I'll take a note on this one. Everyone else okay with that? Any other changes to the ambulance request? All right. We will move forward with extension.
One concern I have is the ten thousand dollars that goes to the ground maintenance and that's, that's not even to the building, the owner's. I guess my, my concern with that is why are we paying for grounds maintenance on something that we don't own? I'm all for helping out the four inch. But ten thousand is quite a bit. If, if we want to help them out, I would almost propose that we have our own ground maintenance crew, go ahead and mow that. It's supposed to get clean in that dollar amount.
Has anyone spoken with the players association?
Who's at the four inch?
I think there is.
Someone talked to Joe.
Well, I guess our, the probably what we have to discuss first is, you know, are, do we want to maintain the grounds of a building in a place that we don't?
Do you want me to grab one?
Yeah. Right.
Well, you know, you know, like a lot of these organizations that we support and four inches is definitely a great one. But they're probably gonna they're gonna mow, mow the lawn with a pathway drill. They're gonna mow the county historical buildings. These, you know, some of these organizations that, you know, they gotta kind of get care of themselves. So
Right. Getting my point.
I think they should be the ones who need to be their grass. We, we have an extension building right next to it. If we, we take care of that building,
There you go.
This ten thousand to mow the four, the big four inch grounds next year.
I just wanted to add to Jeff's number one, the county mows the pitches just up on that same road, but city limits. The sponsor, the county, that big job here. So Jeff's not the only guy we load up somewhere.
You're talking about
Okay. Yeah, talking about four inch grounds. Mine I didn't care. Make ground maintenance, right? Repair maintenance. What was brought up is rather than that. And I don't think we can make, we don't fully understand who's doing the maintenance and whatnot, but the dogs are give your team absorb that, absorb some of that rather than paying somebody or we have a crew there right next door and get towards that.
Right. And that's a big, that's a big area. I can say that. That would feel very large area across the
Right.
And I, I thought maybe Mike had maybe the highway had done it a few years
Previous years.
Yeah.
I, I think people are doing that with ancient old garden. I believe so. Yeah. I think it's so I would, you know, myself, I would say for how it is now, I'm okay approving and moving forward, but if it's me or whoever, sometimes they can leave them. We just talk about this four inch.
But what I think we probably use that as a form approve this and finalize it.
Ah.
Well, I think that's a several month process to figure out.
Well, we don't, we don't, we could just put, we don't have to approve this and run. We could just mark that and see clarification. I think that's what you're saying.
But, but we need an answer. So heading and so today we need to approve something.
And then you can change it, you know, before you approve the annual.
Right.
Because that's why we have a hearing and for any change.
Yeah. Is it, is it solely, is it solely due?
I think it's everything from what Danielle would see. I think it's everything for I believe both of those buildings over there. Well, we know, well, we do, you do the extension out. But this is for the four inch rates as well.
Right.
And, and we've never been approached to move over there. I have to see where the problem. We've got the, we've got the equipment and if we get enough snow where we need help, you'd like to tell Mike at the highway department, you know, come in with a lot of gear or something.
Like I said, I know the county has a big, it's a long pitch.
Sure.
Other city limits on them. We're siding with that whole houses and kind of pasture. I've seen them sort of things, but we've only got about three, four volumes left in the season maybe or
Right. Well, you know, that's, that's something I mean, we all understand sometimes, you know, if you're running out of the year, we have to mow all the time. Where other seasons where we don't get rain, we might have to mow every three weeks or every month. Even, even here, we're only mowing every week at one bar. That's just too hard on the lawn.
So twenty twelve is a perfect example. I mowed my lawn three times in twenty twelve without rain. So, so they're making pretty good money.
So at this point, what do we want to do with that number?
We'd say approve and move forward and then this is something that's going to be we don't know if it's snowing over all, lot mowing, spraying weed, baking the bill. We don't know.
I don't think you're getting, because we've got backup. You get a storm over, you got a blade, county's got blades, trucks and people and
But you know that that's what this
There's a ten thousand dollars we can save.
But you know that that's what this expense is for snowing.
We don't know what it is, but
That's what I'm saying.
But if we don't, you say, we don't give the ten thousand, we can rehire them or we can rely on Jeff or we can rely on the county. We've got two backups. To save ten thousand dollars, but until ten thousand, wait, that's true.
We can always change that before we approve the annual one. So there's a change, we can't change it.
We need to look at our contract with them because they hold grounds to be utilized for county pair of the but that's We don't know what that says.
That's a separate, that's a separate entity outside of the it would be the same, same as that.
Okay, so the contract could read that we pay a portion of the ground payments and the tax of all the rent or we don't want to do that in the rest. So we need to understand what your bank be. What's your bank being?
We're.
Or however, we would tell you something.
Yeah, and and one always has to remember when we take on, if we would choose to take that on, it's our responsibility. It is not free. It costs Jeff's time or it costs Mike's time and it takes those employees away from something we've already expected them to do. So it is not free money. Um, so at this point, let's leave the ten thousand in. And at the end of the year, when we approve the final, this will be one thing to revisit, but then between now and then, who is responsible for figuring this out?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll make a note that the ten thousand for maintenance. Is a question at the end of the year and thank you, Joe, for pursuing that. All right, anything else with county extension? Soil conservation is next.
Thanks, sir.
On the date.
Thank you.
Thank you. You did a good job.
Thank you.
Perfect.
So this one is fairly simple.
That five thousand for professional services is for the tree. The tree manager to.
Yeah.
Is there a way that we can just put that, because that's, that's what it is every year? Can we just put five thousand tree manager so it's more straightforward? I guess we could leave it as professional services too, but if it's the same thing year after year after year. More specific, might be.
So do we want to do that in everyone's budget because they have certain things that are exactly the same?
You can.
Um, it's forced to to with that, with the professional. So any other concerns that soil conservation? Need. Your partner.
Went down. In the last year.
All right.
Yeah.
There's a lot in my mouth there. I like candidate. Uh, planning and zoning.
One thing I add is I think we should look at trying to offset years insurance. You know, because when we hired him, we. Had a set amount that we were going to pay him and shortly thereafter with our insurance, he ended up having to pay again. Seventy-five dollars a month. Maybe this would be reasonable just to. Put that, you know, back in there for the insurance.
Are we going to do that with every employee that affected?
I think there was two, was there not?
Two or three.
Yeah, I I would be fine with that. And particularly with the charity because, you know, it was very soon after we hired him that that changed. So.
So do we do that every year thereafter? I mean, I I I have a. I have a dilemma with doing that because we have to look at every employee equally. And there are some employees who are now paying six hundred dollars out of their pockets. Because they chose to stay with the TPO plan, um, because the county changed. So every year when we change, and I have a feeling it's only going to continue to be a controversial topic. When pursuing that approach.
Here you go. How many employees do you have? Just one. One. Patty, we got four, five. Travers got four, five. He loses one employee, she decides to plant something better. Half your, half your people are gone. Patty loses one person, it's one percent. You need to keep Jessica on the payroll and help her out.
I don't think we're talking about that right now.
Well. I know.
Okay, can we just look at the budget itself and then? I'll check and increase it.
Missed the time to. To.
Well.
I get what you're saying. I don't, that's.
Sorry, I thought. Possibility just. Because if we want to do it specific now, that's.
And a change is to the proposed request. So under that professional services. We added. There's the twenty-eight thousand for district three. And then we have the sixty-nine hundred for beacon. And we've got a G I S in there as well and it's ninety-four thousand. I'm just looking historically, twenty seventeen was thirty-four, twenty eighteen was thirty-six, twenty nineteen was large because we need district three to fill that office. And the current budget is fifty. And the proposed is ninety-four.
Basically, that was, I believe, because I don't really know what it means, but I think I was already at sixty-six or seventy percent at May, in May already.
April, you were at about thirty-six thousand. And I'm wondering if that was a lump sum payment. Now, we should have made that first big payment for that twenty nineteen, right, Joe? The beacon.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, do we? Do you?
That was my only concern because when I seen there.
Do you pay beacon and the system pay beacon? Yes. It should be set out.
We have a sixty-nine hundred dollar.
Nearly. Yeah.
Yes. For that, for the permitting software.
Yeah.
Till twenty twenty-three.
I believe we. I believe some of that was.
Already paid, the initial start.
The initial payment. I believe we paid part of the. So that might have been one of the. But that's a one time.
Yeah.
I don't remember if we split those two years ago. I think that we did.
You know, and the repairs and maintenance down below, I'm not sure what all goes in there. But historically, fifty, three hundred, ten thousand in twenty nineteen. I'm wondering what that was and then we budgeted twenty-two hundred for this year and we're year to date as of April, eight hundred. And there's ten thousand there or so.
I think a lot of the things that's going to follow into that though is as we are embracing technology with Zoom meetings and new screens and. Things like that, I mean, charity is kind of taking the lead on getting that stuff done. We all know how invaluable it is. We still have planning commissioners that are calling into meetings and. I don't think we're going to get away from that anytime soon.
I can certainly grab my notes and.
If you would, very.
What was all on there?
Uh, but but Zoom. You know, that that ten thousand there for repairs and maintenance wouldn't be anything there and the Zoom meetings, I understand, it was nowhere close to ninety thousand. Um, getting back to the point earlier made, uh, we need to be budgeting wisely here. And that seems like a pretty pattern. When you look from current budget of two twenty-three and now this is two eighty-seven. So there.
What do you propose?
Well, I propose looking at what's in those and and aligning them better. Um, because if I don't know if any of the lawsuit fees come out of planning and zoning or if that comes out of donation, there's that's all. So none of those professional services should be in here.
Yeah, I don't know. Sure, we split. They let us for.
Part of it twenty twenty.
I think we'll see.
You know what? Where did the director speak?
That should all come out of the capital building fund.
Yeah, I'm gonna say two, three, three.
Okay.
Yeah. And. Before the end of the year, we need to make sure that's working how we want to.
There's still, um, valley, there's still, we're still waiting on some parts, correct?
A cord that's supposed to make the speakers tie directly into the computer.
Patients are waning on that. How would you say?
You know what?
If I knew what it was called, I guarantee I could get it here in a couple days. It's not John. It's Paul's, the Zoom stuff.
So repairs and maintenance, what was asked about?
Uh, the first one is for professional services.
Yeah, so we increased from. Fifty to sixty-six thousand already because I was at seventy-two percent after May. Plus the twenty-eight thousand, two forty-five for district three, that's where that came in at.
So, um, do you know what those expenses year to date have been? I think Patty's looking that up right now.
And know that off the top.
Okay, because we need to have a good grasp of what's going in there.
And then the repairs and maintenance, uh, we added the fifteen hundred per year for our G I S maintenance. The sixty-nine hundred per year for the electronic permits through twenty twenty.
So beacon is in repairs and maintenance.
Yeah.
That's how you get into professional services.
No, no.
Okay, so seven, that's eighty-five hundred. So the ten thousand probably does make some sense there, so now we really need to focus on the ninety-four thousand. Uh. Professional services, twenty-seven, nine, twenty-two was the district three and then seven thousand was to the P S R I.
Yeah, that's the R G I S initial fee.
What is G I S?
How much was that?
That's the G I S system.
Oh.
It was seven thousand dollars for the software purchase.
One time.
One time.
So that was year, that's the year to date expenditures there. That was, you said, district three. Yeah, and then seven, so that's thirty-five thousand. So what else then goes in professional services to get us to ninety-four? I guess that was my question.
I think the reason it was in ninety-four. In twenty nineteen was when we had district three doing planning and zoning.
Yeah, that's the, it's been made.
So I I think that realistically, you know, break it down to. You know, what? Less would be appropriate.
Well, I, yeah, and I see like what you did here is you got. Seventy, sixty percent of your budget. Already paid over the question, I guess, is there anything else?
Going forward, the rest of the year, what else is going to be spent there? It's one time, it just is a one time. And so what else is going to go in there?
So it sounds like you can subtract out the district three.
Um, and you know, and that was, that was a one time thing. For last year, so this year we budgeted fifty thousand in twenty twenty. And from the looks of it, we aren't even going to hit fifty thousand unless we have some surprise thing that goes in professional services.
I would, I would say district, district three. You know, plus. It looks like where we.
And the G I S was in there, so district three, G I S is thirty-five thousand. We want to put in forty thousand for a budget. We want to put fifty thousand in like we did in twenty twenty.
I think we budgeted fifty, we weren't.
How long, district three was going to be, yeah.
And I, you know, may, maybe it would be better. Because I I know, you know, we do that, we talked to a contractor for rewriting. Tower ordinance. I know that's on the horizon.
They worked on that on their own.
So.
And, well, we have talked about the company, the company's plan this year. And I I don't, I don't have a cost for that, but something like that's not.
But if we do it, if we do it in twenty twenty, it doesn't come out of the twenty twenty-one budget we're talking about.
Well, I don't think so, but I think we got some goals for a comp lab and we were talking. It was, it was.
Yeah, when I first started, I checked into it, it was like a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand.
It's a no from. You've got to take me. Three, so I'm just Gary, but.
Well, yeah, I wasn't sure exactly, uh. I just seen the number that was spent already.
So the change here would be professional services to fifty thousand. Is everyone okay with that? I think forty would probably get us there. But if if the general consensus is fifty, I'm fine. Are you good with fifty?
Yeah, yes.
All right. Patty, you can do that. All right, uh, next tab would be highway. The, uh, I think the largest concern, um, and Don raised it as well, is right now we have nothing down for any capital expenses. Any purchases whatsoever. That's the only thing missing from this budget. Otherwise, it's a pretty aggressive budget.
And and by capital, Don, you you brought a replacement of a quickly road breaker trucks and and I think that is important. To do something like that, similar how we do the in-depth, similar how we do emergency. Did we ever decide, was it like a, like a percentage or a set amount? I know we talked about it, I can't remember if we did that on that. Was it?
We did, yeah, we did.
We just talked.
We we left off the cliff and landed on that one.
But I think either. I think either a set amount or a, or a percentage would probably be appropriate.
Yeah, five million dollars. Fifty percent of your. Seven hundred fifty thousand. You know, yeah. That's kind of what. Do we have a clearly accurate. Down machine? For for that requirement, uh, equipment.
Uh, I would say the latter part, no, we have an equipment question.
You can probably say our equipment, that's going to take depreciation schedules. Off of that. It's going to be a jet figure.
I I wouldn't like to see something like an equipment list, something like you're saying to Joe. And, you know, I kind of like what Steve has here, in his is obviously smaller, but here's his plan of replacement. That's going to be tougher for Mike to do, but it would be nice to see what he's thinking. We got two road graders, we got to get rid of one this year and one two years from now. Trucks, um, you know, with the bulldozers, it would be nicer if there was some sort of plan. So we can kind of. At least get an idea of how we. It seems like what we're doing now is we keep stuff, tell there's money and we think it's something. But to Don's point, it'd be better that we save enough.
We know also if we could have a list from Mike. The truck age, mileage.
Yeah.
Uh, repairs done to it, we've spent on it, this road grader, how it is, how many hours on it. You know, just, and everybody gets copied of that, so we all kind of on the same page, so that. Oh, that grader might last or, you know, whatever.
He said that out on, was it by design last year?
Yeah, he said it's.
Because the years worth of hours is, we don't, can't use that.
We don't currently have any, you know, some equipment, do we? We basically pay for everything.
Yeah, they've never asked for equipment.
Not sure if one eye. Seems like you. I think the whole tractor is.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll sit with Mike and get what you're asking for there. I would suggest that we would create a thousand pound of. Yeah. Just because that's what one road grader lost in replacement. An example of, of, you know. Every operation is different. Perfect example is we bought that eight, the turner count. Forty thousand dollars. Now we're looking at thirty thousand dollars per year. It's probably the huge, I don't know, a hundred dollars. Not very many. And it's a situation where we haven't replaced, I didn't need to be replaced, right?
Yeah, we've got, I would say most part equipment is all appreciated. And you looked at it.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I spent.
But I am on progress.
What's, what do you think? Would it be better to do like a percentage of the budget? Um, you know, just as a line, you know, ten percent, I don't know what the number would be. Or would, would it be a set amount?
What we should do is take our. Forty percent or whatever percent of, taking equipment, graders, trucks. Tractors, that kind of thing. We need to track our utilization on those and then hours. And you can pretty easily come up with a depreciation, it costs you. Costs fifty bucks an hour for that equipment to be sitting there running. And so we look at that, assign a dollar value to that, add all those up. There's, there's your depreciation. Get your top hitters and then you control the life of the, the power of things, pick up guns, but. But on the day, for today, maybe put it out, we probably need to get something in that. Some seed money in there.
Just one more supplement to that. Years ago, the company used to add auctions every so many years, get into the circle, the state does it. I don't know how long it's been since the company's had a launch. I unload some of that stuff that just sits out there and rusts and.
And they load it when they move.
Well, my. Well, Mike goes that they were keep just sending to Gerard.
It was twenty seventeen, last one.
Yep.
So, just put, get it on the, because it's the assurance off, we say.
I'm going to work with Mike on that report. What do you, what do you want?
I think some mileage and hours and age and.
I'd like to see a list.
There are bills in the past.
I'd like to see a list of his replacement plan on what he sees, uh, we need to get a new road grader every three years or whatnot, uh, if we got to rotate out, excavator or whatnot, just kind of, he's, we should be a few years out.
It looks like double the utilization.
Well, I get what you're saying, but a truck will go a lot longer than.
Right, but if we've got a semi truck that we put ten thousand miles on it there, even though it may have high miles, it's, it's not going to be replacing soon if we refuse it much. So that's. Let me, let me sit down with Mike, we assume we can't get a report that, uh, make sense.
You're, you're right, because like, a semi tractor, you, if we put ten or twenty thousand on it, a semi tractor is, so, sometimes it enters a lot of hundred thousand, or maybe a rack job is five hundred thousand. So ten, twenty, thirty, fifty thousand a year is, is not right, you know, we've replaced the units, uh, in eighty seventy-nine.
But if he has annual miles and hours on equipment, historically, that would be great. Doesn't, I like the app that we started recording that.
So what number do we want to put in for machinery and auto equipment?
Anyway, ballpark, I mean, what are, oh, equipment list is totally right now.
But he must have given it to you in the hard copy.
See that.
I don't have an electronic copy.
So we usually have, let's say, we usually have two. I think it's a plus, plus. Those.
Little, I agree with what you're saying, uh, another, uh, thing to consider, uh, for the James River bridges, is that going to be on, under the highway? Is that funding for, for those?
We haven't talked about that yet.
Well, is that going to be in years that, are we going to be a separate, uh, budget for that?
That was separate last year at the end, wasn't it? That was separate.
Is that how we want to do that, or do we want to have it under the highway? So I, I don't, doesn't matter to me, we just, we just, uh.
We've got two hundred fifty thousand dollars in bridge fund.
And, and our goal last year was annually to put about two hundred thirty thousand in that fund.
And, um, and I do think we need to revisit that approach, uh, but let's do that toward the end.
If you put some wild things in.
Yeah, two fifty for twenty twenty.
I, and then, and to me, that's going to be, you know, that will affect this a certain way, we need to put money away in the highway fund. But we also got to put money into the bridge fund as well, and, uh, are, are we going to have enough to put, continue to put two hundred fifty thousand? And put three hundred thousand? I don't know.
And then we need more, for work. When you say, we've got a gallon of paint, as Mike likes to say, we put it somewhere.
I think, I think we do need to have, we do need to address bridges, we need to trust capital. I think after we get rid of this, we got, it's going to be a, a loss. We've got this horrible interest rates, should we stop sitting on a million dollars or should we be borrowing?
And you guys are in roads. What the industry is. Got to repay.
Right.
That's what everybody.
Yep. No, I agree, but even if we, if we, if we hit the middle and we don't sit on any, and we're not borrowing. My question. Can we afford?
And I think that was our discussion last night, when Mike stood up there and said, the state is encouraging us not to replace some of those bridges. And instead to repair them as you would a normal bridge. So that certainly reduces the cost to it. It takes the, you had on the road a little bit, but if it takes it twenty years, thirty years, or five years.
I guess that's a long discussion. And, and back to the point, Don, I, I would support a number in here for capital expense. But keep it in mind, we may have to revisit that. Down the road, but I, I guess I would, it's probably lower than it should be, but I guess, let's support about two hundred and fifty thousand for capital expenses. And as we go and look at the budget more, if there's money available, I will, I will be trying to increase that to three hundred. Like Don would say, just to put something in there for now, I would support two hundred fifty thousand. I don't think it's going to get over the map.
I think, I'm not sure how I would, but I think that, but, go ahead. Go ahead and put it there, doesn't mean.
I would grab a move.
Yeah, that's over my authority. I don't have so much authority.
I, I just, um, and, and, yeah, not saying that more isn't needed, but I, I just want to see how it works. When we put all this budget together, and we have budgeted versus what we come in, we need to see what we've ended up with. If we budgeted more, then we're making.
So now, if we put two fifty on this line item, and Mike does not use it, it does not carry over. So we have to put that in like we did up here in a, in a separate equipment fund. You see the difference there?
Yeah, if you're just, if you're not going to spend it, you want to put it in the capital outlay.
So that stays there. So if we put it in capital outlay, we can still pull it from it next year. It's just that it won't carry over to next year, and we don't, if you put it in a budget, it doesn't carry over for Mike. So is everyone good with two fifty in a capital outlay fund for highway?
And, and let's revisit, let's revisit that. I think, I think really the, the important thing is that, you know, to your credit, Don, is that we're starting at that. From what I understand, hasn't previously existed with Irish apartment, and it's, it's a good plan.
So, and also, one thing, oh, any other changes requested on Mike's budget?
More, more of a question, but, uh, the repairs and maintenance, why, why does that fluctuate? You, so, so much, I, I know repairs and maintenance are hard too. Is that just vehicle repair, repairs and maintenance, is that roads too?
This is our only equipment that needs to be fixed. And the older it gets, the more cost we will have in this line item. Mike's forecasting several things needing pretty large repairs next year.
Yeah, that's, you know, you have your schedule, maybe this would be.
I mean, that was, yeah.
Transition is going to cost you. And then it can go, oh, thirty thousand, thirty thousand.
Yep, wasn't forecasted. So, all right, we will move.
Some, some, uh, mirror barrier or something in the bottom of it. Uh, the hundred dollar, you have to take the old damn brick apart.
Engineers, right? Don't design it to get work done.
That's all. Okay, so let's move on to emergency management, um. It's the biggest budget. So emergency management. Paul has, uh, requested, he requested twenty-five, and I think we already moved that to ten. At the bottom, I'll make sure, make sure I set that down.
Five. Right now.
Yep, so we had taken out that forty-five thousand, two hundred on machinery, because that's in his capital outlay fund. Any other concerns with that budget?
Are we, for salary increases, are we gonna, are we going to calculate a salary increase for? You know, we want that, or?
Yep, and there was one calculated in vitamin zone that we didn't touch on either. I think with the salaries, uh, let's leave all of that discussion to the end. So we can do a, um, a group and look at everybody and try to treat everybody fairly.
Somebody figured out, say, for example, two and a half percent increase would be for all the employees, what that total? How much money would be?
Yep, I can give that to you at the end when we start talking about all that. Yep, I, I had, had already sent that out to all of you before.
Let me call an email, you can turn it over to me.
Here is, uh, this was years ago, it's been in there, there's two hundred ninety-one thousand. Or whatever. Which would be my, what should be my.
So he has money in his capital, like I said, is from years, years ago, and where, where is that money accounted for in our, um, fund balances?
It, it isn't in there, it's just in the coming equity, equity. So this has nothing to do with the, of the balance sheet.
Really?
So if we start in the capital.
It's in the general fund, but you know, it's. It's, it's in the general fund, um, yeah, because we started the two hundred fifty thousand one.
Right.
But then he's got that. It's been in there for years.
So could we transfer that one thirty-five into the capital? How we're going to start?
The two ninety-one?
No, that road and bridge, I've got twenty-seven, two hundred, that's for county application, is that what you're saying?
That one thirty-four, that's emergency management and ambulance. You really don't have to move it. Yeah, because you can use it either one.
So that money, so we've got six, say we've got six million in our general fund today, two hundred ninety-one thousand of it has been designated.
Yeah, but this is, all the way down, that's doesn't mean.
Doesn't mean, it still should be, not be in the general fund.
Well, it's accounted in the.
In what?
It is accounted, accounted for in the general fund.
That's where it resides until we use it, but it's been tagged for this. So we just have to keep that, if we're planning on then saying, whoa, Mike, you've got that much, go ahead and use it. We have to remember, we're using part of our general fund to fund our budget for twenty twenty-one, that is really. We do that every year, though. Yeah, you know, but I, I guess in mine, if I look at that and I say, well, this is what our carryover's been, and then all of a sudden we use a chunk of it, then our, our ending balance will lower every year. I'm just trying to get it straight in my.
Oh, you're exactly right.
You know?
That's why I would ask what's balanced, is that the general fund?
And, and the next question to tee off that is, how much of it has already been allocated? So what really is available? And this has been allocated. So.
Well.
Oh, yep.
Because I see, we got a hundred thousand dollars specifically for the fleet. We've got two hundred fifty thousand for all bridges. And I assume that was to the James River Bridge, exactly.
And actually, we can make a motion that can put it on, we can send jail improvements. Uh, we don't need that anymore, we can put that back into.
So we can move the thirty-six back to the general fund?
Correct.
So can we move, can we move the fleet's bridge to just our general bridge, that's you? To clean some of this up a little bit?
The fleet's bridge was gone, I just.
They only used a million of it. There's a million one hundred in there.
It's a, oh, that's just a hundred thousand, okay.
So, that is zero. It'd be nice.
So we, we've actually have three hundred and fifty thousand pounds in, in other areas of James River Bridge.
Right. You know, and really, I mean, it's up to you guys, but you don't, I mean, you don't have to move it, I mean, because it's still for bridges, the fleet's bridge.
I mean, it's just outlined with that, I guess it's what you could do, I move it all bridges. I think it'd be cleaner, I would like to, to give them a minimum amount up here, I guess.
Right.
If you've got twenty funds and they've all got a little something, but if you can do it in ten, it's just cleaner.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as we're still putting the money away that we said we were going to, you know. You know, if we, in my opinion, we still need to put two hundred fifty thousand into it. Because that hundred thousand was there, we can't put that hundred thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand and say we put it, two hundred fifty thousand in this. That hundred thousand was already there.
Right.
As long, as long as that's.
Yeah, it's just to be. I just don't want to put two hundred fifty to the bridge, is that two hundred fifty?
Exactly. It's, no, that makes sense, I, I really didn't want to clean it up, but, I think that sounds good.
So then jail, we're going to move to the general fund.
Yeah, because we got a, a jail payment separate.
Yeah, but it actually, the term is, it will be moved to undesigned.
All right, so at our next meeting, we'll make, we'll make those two motions at our next meeting, so we'll get that on the agenda.
Yeah, is it undesigned or the, what's the unassigned fund balance?
It was three years ago, unassigned, but now it's undesigned.
What is the unassigned fund balance of four seven thousand one?
I think that was a, uh, that was with emergency management.
Is that?
We moved that, we moved that. When you used it.
So that's, that's gone then, or there's?
If you look at that sheet, it's at forty, forty-four, seven, ninety, twenty-eighteen, so.
Except that forty-seven thousand isn't doing anything, maybe we should find out.
No, it's un, it's undesigned.
Yeah, I noticed it's not a negative number, it's a positive.
Yeah, so it's going to be.
It's not named.
There's two.
And I'll put on the agenda, it'll be just, um, move. Designated on a new one.
So where did that go? What is it?
Uh, what do you want? Do you want the hundred thousand and the two ninety-one, eight fifty-seven into the sign from the bridge?
No, we just want to move the hundred thousand into the two hundred fifty thousand.
And then the thirty-six, we move back to undesigned.
Undesigned, yep.
And then the one thirty-four is the ambulance, which is now also the road and bridge, so that road and bridge, we currently will add two fifty to in our twenty twenty-one budget.
Right, now, the, over the thirty-six thousand though, undesigned.
That's just moving it back to.
That just means we can use brain.
Which is both back into.
If we know it's there.
Well.
I don't like the undesigned.
I agree with Joe, it needs to be public.
So I would, thirty-sixty into the, into the.
Drop energy. Drop the 250.
Drop the 250, that's what I would prefer.
Does everybody follow what you're saying?
Are the 250 that we stuck up in and put into White's capital? If we move this 36 in and then drop that 250, I know we have a plan for that number.
You mean, you don't want to put it in for next year? Now, is that what you mean by drop it?
Uh, move it to like 200 or 214, put 14,000. So, yeah, what you give, I'm thinking, right? We have four bridges that we've got to work on. Say. They all will be done for a 4 million piece, I don't know. At 16 billion, we have to take 20% of that. We need to have 3 billion, 200,000 dollars accumulated. But that would be. So we're not, we're not stretching anything by 250 bucks. Follow the budget here. Probably. It is.
And I think with what you're saying too, Don, especially since we've put in those P E grants as we could get selected this year. And where we add, we don't have that 100. Where do you go? And then I give it to somebody else.
No, I think so. Last night you said something about people that were here. Said they wanted us to get as much as we could out of the bridges, was that what you said? You know, not replace them, just fix them and get as much as we could. And you said something to that texture and, and I thought about that. And I thought, oh, that's great, but they're not the ones that are driving them. And they're not the ones that might be driving the trucks when they collapse. Maybe, maybe, just maybe, we may have to limit one or two of these bridges to car traffic until we can get enough money to replace them, say the Johnson Bridge. There's not a lot of car traffic across there. And if, if those farmers need to go, they can go around on 4681, or they can haul them down. Or they can, you know, bypass it. So if we would limit, you know, say, car traffic on the Johnson. We know that one or two cars is not going to collapse like a loaded 80,000 pound semi. So just a suggestion, that something that preserves the length of it. Is so that we don't have to replace it in a year or two, or have to worry about it collapsing. Uh, if it was just, I'm saying one ton trucks in the low line, you know. So it's just an idea that, that you don't use it as much. It just won't work out.
Well, hopefully, Clark, or we do a study here on that.
Like I said, those guys are pure, they don't have to drive across.
So.
So that, so what you're saying is let's move the 36, two lines above into the 291.
That's what I would prefer, the unassigned. I just feel like that money gets lost, you know, overlooked all the time.
And then 100,000 down into the 250.
I've got a question for the 36, is that, is that the one to set aside? I want that to lose 25%.
No, that goes into a separate jail fund.
Okay.
So this is just looking at the general fund and where it's allocated right now. All right, well, did you go, want to take a break, five minute break? I need a motion for a five minute break. So, Don, I gotta write this down for Patty and then Dan. So I have a motion on the table for a five minute break for discussion on paper, say aye? Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion curious, we are now on break for five minutes.
Sure.
I think for now, just I think we're gonna end up.
We're gonna circle that, yeah, just leave it 250 for now. Alright, so once you've done some of these, we'll go back in and finish talking. So, I want to mention that I wanna, that's there, and Don will be the only one staying overnight. Yep, that's, it's just for the court team. And Joe, you don't know if he will be employed at all.
Uh, I.
Okay, that's what I'm. Actually, and.
Sounds like they're, at least, my groups is pretty much ongoing, I think, so.
Alright, entertain a, oh, my group's on a motion, you're right, you thought on it. Entertain a motion to go back into session.
So moved.
Sorry.
I have a motion and second to go back into session for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Most curious, we are now back in budget discussions. We had left off with emergency management. Patty has already changed the capital accumulation from 25,000 to 10. Are there any other changes here? Alright, so that concludes emergency management. Now, the next tab would be the other. Oh, search and rescue, I missed that one, thank you. Are there changes to that one? Alright, search and rescue, I would say is fine. And now we are to the other tab. So, we currently on the first page have contingency at 400. Any reason to change that right now? Alright, we will leave that one. We have elections. Alright, there being no proposals, elections is fine. Court. Well, there being no proposed changes there, we will leave the court system as is. And data processing. The rental line. Was empty, so did we put the 15 in there?
Okay.
So, the 15 is added. Uh, to data.
What's, yeah, then choose the total.
103.
113.
113, I missed that, I was gonna say that doesn't make sense.
113, so the total is 113,000.
Alright, that's this quarter, and that's fairly set.
Can, can we go back a second? The pictometry that's, that's in there. Do we wanna keep that? In data processing, or would that be better placed somewhere else? And certainly, we probably leave it in here. Would it, would it be better to go somewhere else? I know, planning is only using said equalization, as you said. Better than, giving that up into those budgets, or? Because that's what that pictometry, that's for flyovers, correct?
I just, you know, there's one spot, see, like when you start splitting things up, then you lose your thoughts.
Well, and, and that's kinda what I'm getting at, too, is, you know. That maybe, maybe it should go to zone refining, or should go to equalization. To, to reflect the true cost, instead of here, it's, it's kind of a. Kind of a hidden cost, we need a pictometry for what we do with, you know, taxes and compliance, and maybe it would be better if even one of those too.
I could make a, this for, uh, who I have.
I, I guess I might wanna know what the rest of the voters, my, my doubt is, it's, it's here, you know, it's in, it doesn't really reflect. You know, whether probably it's.
So, I, there's more than just those two departments, I would think, that use it, I would think registered needs probably at times, I would think sure, probably uses it at times, emergency management. You know, I would think a lot of our departments use those, I know I call it up all the time. Well, the energy, to go look at locations, right?
Well, yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
But I think this is, unless I'm wrong, this is the, the flyover that compares, flyover to the last flyover.
Yeah, but that's.
I think that's the aerial, yeah, the aerial imagery is all part of that.
That's the aerial, so I'm sure the sheriff uses the aerial, all of those. I think Patty's suggestions make a line item here, and Joe's point of keeping that true cost all together. Is maybe a wise, because it only happens every three or four years. And then, I'm sorry, I'm going there for, I'm, I'm. So, clerk. Is, um. Is set there, um. And the predatory animal. Is set charged by state law.
Others, others wouldn't apply to that.
Right. He took his coot tails in when they had the, the sale at 4681, and buy that, happy with that. So, clerk and predatory animals are fine. And now we were to airport, which is one of the discretionary. Items.
Do we wanna come back to this one, and do them all at once, or do we wanna talk about this?
Uh, I'm open.
Getting down to the, the.
Yeah, well, I would almost, uh, do we have, uh, and this might be difficult to do, but almost left to get. Down to the end and see what we have left to allocate, I know that'd be tough to do, so how would, how did everybody else?
So, I think Joe's point is, we're getting kinda close to being at that point, I think the next four sheets all deal with some level of discretionary. So, we've got airport, we've got care for public welfare, contact center.
Would, would, would it be a possibility, now that we've gone through all these, four F? Put down the I, the whole seven ones. Then total expenses and total revenues, and see where we're at. Which we can't do today, but they come back, we're gonna have a teleline meeting to finalize the adjustments that we have made.
Well. Like I said before, you know, the changes, what you want, I can, I can do, I'll run another, then I'll run a provisional budget. A revenue expenditure as of July, or as of today. And, so I can, then I'll have you look at the, I'll, I'll do this on the provisional, and then have that, send that out to you, and make sure everything is okay, and then I can publish it next week. But you can still change when you have the hearing here. It's a town. So, you have, you'll have all the. So, is, that's why we have a hearing, is if there's any change.
Well, I'd suggest. We have no idea where we're, for sure, where we're at, I would suggest, would we put in what we think we want out of this? And then make adjustments, according to our own year's ability.
So, Patty, this is what you had sent out. At where we were at, with what was currently in there. And did everybody get that copy? Because we are currently, before we made these changes today, we were applying 3.3 million from our general fund. And the previous year, we had applied 3.1. Million from the general fund, carryover. So, um, according to that, we're kind of in a ballpark. The big change we just made would be the highway capital. And we haven't even talked about the bridge one. So, those are pretty major. Changes, so I do think we need to force ourselves to talk about each of these right now, and if we wanna stay the course, for example, airports first up. We had went last year from 15 to 10, we wanna stay at 10. We want, we wanna change that number.
You know, another option might be, just put in what the city requested of us, and, and if. We need to lower that later again, and then, okay, maybe, maybe your option's better, should be.
So, are you going to request we put another 250 in a bridge fund as well?
No, no, I was saying, I was saying for, for just the, the ones that, uh, for expenditure, an option. Would just be, you know, the city has requested 15, just put that in there now, and revisit it, I'm also trying to cook the calendar and revisiting it.
You know, I guess in my mind, I think we're already in trouble. Because we've already just said we want another 250 for highway equipment, and we're gonna add another 250 for bridges, that's 500,000. That is not reflected in what Patty sent out, so that means we gotta use 3.8 carryover funds, and last year we used 3.1. So, what we're doing is, we're eating into the cushion, we always try to have the same cushion at the end of the year, that should always be the goal. Is to always have the same cushion, so we need to force ourselves to have the tough conversations today. Or more.
So, that's why we have to do that, either you go through increased the rapid度 of existing. Economic. Progress, or you. Increase taxes. Wheel tax, that we got, that's it here.
Yep.
We have to do it.
We need to have that discussion today, and, and that could be used to, to help cover. Putting money in the bridge fund, or, because we've, we've already added a lot of road projects for next year, that's why Mike's budget is larger than last year's, because he wants to do more road work. We need to do that. But we need to force ourselves, we can't keep putting off the hard conversations. So, over here for 2020, we, this year donated Boys and Girls Club of 20,000, Hampton Transit 5,000. Airport 10, homeless shelter 10, contact center 50, domestic abuse 10, public library 15, historic sites 18. Senior Center was almost 48,000, drainage commission for the Missouri River was 1,000, and then YEPG was 25,000. And remember, last year, we, we asked them to change that from 50 to 25, with the option to pay 50 at the end of the year, if we felt we could. So, those things, we need to decide, do we wanna keep those at the same level for 2021, or do we wanna make changes?
Well, we get some pretty passionate presentations on the side of all of these, senior citizen center. Picture that last night.
And they were asking for.
47,195?
47,195.
I, I would say in particular with the, the senior centers, we, we have to take care of our seniors, and if we don't. It's gonna cost us more in the long run, here at the core. So, this, this goes to maintenance of the facility, but. You know, all, all of the meals in particular, that have gone out for nutrition, you know, I know for a fact that that's, you know, probably the only hot meal those. Citizens give, that, that nutrition keeps them hot at the hospital, and, and. Which, you know, they're well-paid for, they can, so. I, I guess I would support, you know, at least with the senior center, I don't know if we're there yet, but. I, I would support the 47,195 as the proposed budget, and that could be lower. It, it is a little higher, like they talked about, because there's, there's no fire system in the kitchen, as of right now, and so that number could be lower.
So, do we have support for that, 47,000 for the senior citizen?
I, I agree, yeah, we, we need to take care of our seniors. Retire all their life, but they're, they're suffering more than anybody does right now, they're shut in. Our doctor, the VA coffee, was 101 years old, was locked in his apartment over there on Wall Street. And you had some, have coffee with us on Thursday.
Well, like Christie said, on a fixed income, you know, brown beef was $2 a pound, and now it's $6.
Yeah.
And they're on a fixed income, and their income hasn't gone up, and now they're, they're struggling, and, and. If we don't, and again, I know I said it's for, if we don't take care of our seniors, it's gonna cost us more through hospitalizations and ambulance calls, and all of.
Like some of the seniors have said, need, uh, medication, I guess, nine different kinds of medication I gotta take. Is it medication, or is it food, rent, electricity? What, what, is it not going so far? So, we have to take care of the seniors.
Joe and Don.
Joe, I need support for the center and teachers, I, I am gonna just play devil's advocate. A little bit, just to get, you know, we talked about 4H grounds. And, uh, we had concerns with us paying for maintenance of the building. And that's what we're doing with senior center too, though, we split the operating costs, the city owns the building, but we also pay for capital.
Yeah, I believe that's a contract that has been in place with the city since, I'm saying, 1870. Since the 70s.
And I'm not, I'm not, at this point, saying we gotta stop it, I'm just saying, when we're having these discussions regarding everything.
I did notice in the packet they presented, if anyone looked at their five-year capital plan for the senior center. They're going to be asking us, probably for 150,000 for a parking lot here, a year after that. So, that certainly will be a large discussion at that point. Don, do you have thoughts?
I support.
So, let's put the 47,195 in for senior citizens. So, let's go back up, um, I guess we've got airport right now in front of us, since we're talking about city requests, let's go to the airport. They're requesting 15 again. Any thoughts on airport?
16 on the airport request, and 20,000 on boys and girls, or?
Well, let's talk just about the, the city. For 2020, we had 20,000 for Boys and Girls Club, we had 10,000 for airport.
I think in the past, the discussion was, um, there was some corp, uh, corporation, I think, over at the theater at their corporate plane that flew out of their lot, and. From what I've understood, they actually sold that plane now, and they, they don't do that anymore, from what I've heard.
So, our airport is vital, I happened to be going to Menards one day, a couple years ago, and a Blackhawk helicopter came in, which. You know, with me in military, I turned around, headed for the airport, and the Blackhawk was from Fort Riley, Kansas, and all of us veterans have been there. Talked with all the pilot, the co-pilot, the crew chief, and there was a female on room for the ride, and they were stopping to get to refuel. Their radius around Fort Riley is 300 miles, GAN is 299, and I said, if you blend into the lake, it's, it's never been up this way before. We've been all in other directions, and we're gonna go all the way back to start training session. The, the woman that went along for the ride, uh, she was headed for West Point in three weeks, and I have pictures of these people, and, uh. It's vital, it's vital, the, the army, that's not an actual guard, that's wartime army that came up here to refuel. If you decide to make a trip like that again someday, and gee, if I didn't give us any money for fuel or whatever, then what?
Do you think that should come out very soon?
I don't know where it's gonna come out of, but I'm just saying, I was there when that Blackhawk landed, and I got pictures to prove, and I talked with the crew chief. And, and pilot, and what, everyone know what the entire budget for the airport is. I was saying, too much for.
I apologize, I have some criminal cases that came up this morning.
Okay, I was gonna get help with you right here.
Sorry, Mr. Johnson, I'm saying it's our busy, busy day.
600, is it 600 for 90, you probably, many years, so many plans, 15,000, the crew chief.
No problem. I know it's been up, brought up many times, that the county does the ambulance service.
You get a lot of people held, but I give credit.
And we fund that for a $100,000 gap out of our coffers. I'm not a proponent of 15, so, and, so, Don's made this statement, I, I would even go down to five. With the eventual thought of having a B0, because the county does the anthems. And it is very unique across the board.
I can support that, I mean, I, I enjoy the, the air show, including they get back to having that, I enjoy it, it also can't take rest, it's, it's like it. It's a, it's a neat. A neat thing to have, and it really is. When I look at these dollars, I kinda boil it down to, let's say, uh, at the center. There's some, there's a group of people who truly, I feel are, are in need of support. Airport, I know, that's simple, but I'm not saying that.
I'm gonna get it down.
In terms of economic development, as you said, probably less than a main airport. The track. Question, I should have asked it last night. Very deep example, and. Those major will tend to have that.
So, at this point, what do we wanna do? The city's asking for 15, last year, or for 2020, we have 10, where do we wanna be at 2021? The city's asking for fifteen last year, or for twenty twenty, we have ten. Where do we want to be at twenty twenty? We have three folks who favor five or ten. My vote would be five.
Ten or more.
So Gary's at ten? Dan?
I guess I gotta agree with Joe, is that it's an important service, but what what we contribute is really just a small amount. We gotta fix some roads and bridges and we gotta, we gotta be putting every dollar we can into it. So I'd say, just like the latter, the two numbers.
So you're at five? Or ten?
I'm about on seventy-five hundred. It's important, it's important to maintain it. But it's also important to maintain our road condition. And this is, this is the example, you know, for the people listening is we can't have it both ways. We can't fund everything that amount we want and fix our roads. We got an obligation to do what we can to fix the roads. Because if we at the county don't, nobody's gonna help us. And, you know, so I guess I split the difference.
Yes, I'd like you to throw in that.
Well, yeah, without raising taxes, we're in a tough spot. And even if we do, it's just a tiny drop in the bucket of what we need. And it's not the end of the county, it's the sole county that's dealing with this when we go to conferences. Every single county in the state is in the same boat we are and struggling like we are. And expenses are rising. So I, I get little sides. I don't know.
They're real positive for any county that's, we have very low debt. Some of these counties, they're looking up with debt so high.
Yeah. Well, we look at, you know, Clay County and Hutchinson, which have to, we have to build brand new courthouses for twelve million dollars or four million dollars. I don't know how they're gonna do it. I mean, we at least have good buildings built. So it's tough. So I don't know. Split the debt at seventy-five? Yes.
Go.
Five or seventy-five?
Yeah, I'm coming.
We're down to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Well, let's put.
We, the takeaway is, is where we're headed. We do what we can now. You know, some of the things that we find when people say, well, I don't, you know, I don't, let's say, the homeless shelter. I don't get anything out of that. I usually find a tangible where it helps them as far as bill costs. I'll say some of that. And I struggle to make that up for that airport. You know, again, I know a lot of people who were part of that airport and go up there. I think it's, I think it's, at times is useful. Put a dollar on it or to prioritize its usefulness. I think there's other places that might be.
So where do we end up?
I'm trying to, I guess I compromise. Let's put it at seventy-five hundred. And then I wanna look at where we end up on the budget. Expenses and revenue and we might have to revisit this.
Everybody good with seventy-five hundred?
There's a picture of the Blackhawk in the city.
All right, so here are four is the next. Or what was the last city? Should we leave the last city one for the library? Let's go ahead and do the library while we're talking about the city. For twenty twenty, we had fifteen thousand dollars in our budget. And I think the city's asking for twenty-four thousand again. We had talked last night about their increase in fee essentially covered the decrease in funding we gave them. Do we want to change the fifteen thousand?
I think for this year, I will change it. It's kind of a difficult, difficult year to gain what's happening there. And you have a lot of programs outside of different books that essentially are pretty to the public, whether they're a part holder or not. Classes and things that provide a conference room if anybody wants one, sign up. But there's more than just rent and books. We did not see that drastic decrease in library guards with the increase fee. Data might be kind of skewed, so I would be okay.
With the fifteen?
With the fifteen and give it a hundred years, see what.
Any other comments on that?
I think the libraries kind of hurts themselves, right? Doing that. See, if we would back five dollars per area, then right, their funding would likely actively decrease. So.
Ninety fifteen, okay. We'll stay with fifteen on the library, which Patty already put in. Oh, I put the twenty-four. Oh, did you? Oh, well, I put the fifty. All right, so that takes care of the three requests from the city. Now we stay in line. After the airport, we have here the four.
Around the top, the dispatch center, that's pretty much a given that one fifty-two, they will utilize.
Where is that? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because that's strictly, the county has nothing.
Yeah, and I guess when we do the hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. I guess that was, that was on my list of the, for the city. That was the last one.
All right, so then are we ready to go to here of the four? So at this point, we have, we normally do fifty thousand dollars to the contact center.
This is in the.
Oh, that's not in the here of the four? Oh, oh, got it. That's two now. Okay, so let's focus on here of the four. Is there any change to that estimate?
The only thing that I would note to go three thousand.
Yes, I changed.
On supplies, okay.
This is something we really don't have a lot of influence on over. Just kind of what it'll bring to us, correct? I mean, if we get.
And they're probably implying how many dollars, we might have a.
Would require a debate. So it's almost like quarter. So I guess I'm, we don't have a choice. I'm okay with one quarter. Is that, are we gonna go to one hundred and five thousand and add three dollars in supplies?
Well, it was a hundred and four.
Yeah, in my notes, I thought we were going to two thousand, three thousand in supplies. So bringing us to a hundred and five thousand.
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
So next, public welfare. So here we have the homeless shelter at ten thousand. Any requests to change that at all?
I see in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, it said five thousand. And then it moved to ten thousand.
Yeah, he came in, I think it was in eighteen, wasn't it?
What was, what was the reasoning at this point?
They moved to the new location.
Moving expenses.
I need to serve more folks.
Person wait list. I do believe they get a match. Whatever the county pays, I believe, grant them that matches, so. Be a good use of money, double the word. I would like to get three less than that.
I guess I supported it. One, one issue I do have is, is I like it and prefer when people come in and give us at least a yearly report on how, you know, the dollars are being spent, utilized. Because we really don't know how that ten thousand was spent and we can guess. It's nice when the agencies we give money to at least come and give us a yearly report.
So we're good with ten? All right, let's move on to the contact center now. We heard from Jennifer last night. We want to keep it at fifty thousand for twenty twenty-one.
We really discussed on the, I believe that you either the coin, well, the county's picking on some of those duties the other side, and I know Jennifer will be tiring and they strongly suggested that I think their replacement would probably cost more than what their parents have. I think this was a goal here. I think this is an area where we need to look at and see if we can buy it with other existing services to them. We probably can't do it at this time. It should be a ivory project. I would agree. You know, they seventy-three, that one there started?
Uh, something like that, yeah.
You know, they've served a lot of people.
Yeah, that's, you know, they, that's a lot of different people that are used to it and.
We're doing that. That's a lot of work. But it's probably a lot of work. I think there's several services in town that buy the same service. So I would give some discretion around how that can be most effective.
Are they gonna do the same services that they do now? Pass it off to someone else. I think the only thing they're passing off would be the, the indigent here, the hospital lines and stuff that the county may or may not be responsible for. And that's going to the state's attorney's office, but they do offer emergency services that are not offered by other entities in the county. I do agree overall the whole area needs to discuss the general approach to helping the actress population. So would this be a scenario like we did with the four age maintenance, whereas we decided on an amount and then someone was tasked with trying to do what Don suggested and get the ball rolling on figuring out the best approach overall?
I would agree. Yeah, we're not gonna come up with a solution today.
No.
It needs to be a high priority over the next year.
You know, because my opinion is that office, there was some discussion that they felt they might get kicked out of the building. And I assured them the space they are allocated today would certainly there was no intentions to remove them from this building at all. We would continue covering the expenses we have been covering.
I would give the we, we fund that very. If you look at everything else, I feel area in our jail, we need to protect our interests. That's what I would say, that we need to protect our interests somewhere, too, and maybe take so much active role in their succession planning. And what? But that, that's gonna be a big change there.
Yeah.
Well, at least we need to have an understanding of what they need to understand and we need to understand what well, not too long ago, I think on the hit wave, we were trying to present one of our idea, solidity. One location. Planning the services, so people can wear, go, right, going, it's just going, so they're well aware of plans we're proceeding, right, and I think that that was what.
Yeah, and maybe that location is our basement. That's the first stop and people are funneled there, but we are not going to solve that issue today. So the amount we need to look at is, is that fifty thousand what we want to buy for next year?
I'd say yes.
And I think if you do, if another organization in their lifetime, they're gonna be requesting more than fifty thousand.
Totally. If we're gonna consolidate, maybe yes. Yeah, my understanding, reflecting what you made, we, we're shooting towards one location, and I, I think it still would be the separate entities. They would all just be held in one central location. Food, clothing, A D services, all of that. I know that for quite a while, I was looking at location, that's difficult. It all starts here in the building, you know. People go all over places, but again, that's bigger. Bigger. Issue with, you know, hands, so. Far as funding today, yeah, we, I believe, I'm okay with, with continuing funding our current rate. But again, seeing where the transition is.
Is everyone good with the fifty?
Yes.
All right, I didn't hear any no's, so we will move on. We've got catastrophic PR for two thousand. I can't see any changes on that one. Then we go to the WIC, which we are reimbursed for this, correct Patty? So WIC, probably no changes there. We have a mentally handicapped which we have a hundred thousand in there right now for. Which we have a hundred thousand in there right now for our budget, that's our current budget. Um, looks like that's about the right amount.
Yeah. No, that's not so, that's the next one.
What, what is this hundred thousand get spent?
This is, um, is that like a turning? Okay, so, uh, Patty's checking on that, we got mental health centers, uh, which is listed, most important behavioral health at eighty-three thousand, ability building services, aspire and deplorability staff. Those are the amounts they are requesting this year. So that adds up to a hundred and eight thousand. Everybody okay with those numbers?
Yeah, yes.
And next would be mental illness board. Which is running. We had a budget eighty-eight thousand this year, proposed a hundred. Any changes here?
I'm just curious, why is it going up or? I know that number's pretty close, you just want a hundred, a hundred thousand.
You'd have to ask Patty that.
I just don't know.
I think it's just probably a question. Anybody request a change to that hundred thousand number?
Guessing that someone out here today.
It's Redfield, the head human services center. And it's up to, um, close to forty now.
What, um, we, we pay that, uh, to Redfield, H S C for?
For patients. I believe Redfield has three county residents, I believe. And then the, um, H S C is that.
We're at forty, so?
Yeah, it's close to forty.
I, I just can't move that to eighty, so. In ninety.
How about ninety, is that lose four, lose one?
Uh, eventually, yes.
You put that at ninety, Joe?
Oh, yeah, we're halfway through the year, we're just at forty thousand.
All right, so, uh, that's mentally handicapped, if we go back to that mental illness board. Is where we were at. We want to leave that at a hundred.
That's for the, that's just solid, it's better.
Yeah, Lucy Levino and thirteen.
Oh, uh, four, four, one was down to ninety.
Yes.
So Patty, for the mentally handicapped expenditures, if we have a Yankton County resident that sent one of these instructions and we paid for that, done here?
Yes.
And that goes to the state then? And for the state, I'm.
And the state, that's okay.
And you think the state will pick up?
Well, there are laws, or that's just the county's responsible.
So, so.
What's a mental health center?
Yes, that one was fine. And mental illness board is the one we were on now. Any reason for a change?
Uh, do you want me to check and see how much it is now as of July? Or just about it?
I actually pray that hundred isn't gonna be like.
Yeah, I love the goal.
Based on what we're, where we're at today. This was, uh,
Mental illness board? I think this is Lucy Levino.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're at fifty-five. As of the end of July.
We're close, we're close.
So we should leave a hundred in there, so. And we already did the library. Historical sites. Now, this does not include the separate levy for historical. That would be.
No, we tried to lower it last year.
And we, yeah, we did, we went from twenty-four thousand in twenty nineteen to eighteen thousand in twenty twenty.
We got a lot of comments. To me, I guess I'm not sure. Where that's responsible.
So the historical preservation is forecasted to get a hundred and seven thousand dollars off their tax levy. That's a couple thousand increase over twenty twenty. They started out at ninety-three thousand in twenty seventeen, and now they're forecasted to a hundred and seven in twenty twenty-one.
No, and that goes up, it's five cents.
Yeah, so evaluations go up.
The values go up, they got one.
So do we see any need to change the eighteen thousand?
You know, I'm, I'm on this board as well, and they do, they do preserve a lot of the heritage of Yankton County and the city. You don't think it's important that we, we do remember our history? They do get a tax levy, but.
I don't know if that's strictly for the meat.
No, no, it's not, it's, it's.
I know, I mean, the, the tax levy.
I guess I would support, uh, keeping it at eighteen thousand each year. They, they'll continue to restore the meat building and, uh, I'm sure it'll be better next, I would think, in the next year, and a lot of those expenses will grow away. Especially now, um, the meat building is driven by traffic. And people considering the museum, and that is a substantial reduce this year, so. Yes, at, at least for now, I'd support moving it to eighteen thousand.
Other comments?
Let me curb with Dan, you did eighteen. I can just, I can curb with Dan too, uh, but this would be a, this would be one of the ideas I thought back to.
Exactly, and, and Jesse, you're exactly right, um, for now, and then we, we gotta go look at our incoming expenses. We have to come visit everyone.
You know, I, I've talked to someone before, I remember, last year or two, and, uh, I kind of feel the same with, you know, I, I've been out there and taking kids there, it's a great thing, it does generate some, some tourism. To me, the levy, the intent of that levy was offset what the county is going here. I think the intention that I have to portray to them, that this is not where you can take to actually down. Kind of a, uh, I don't know, warning, but just so they can prepare. And, and they had talked about having some more fundraisers, and they thought that, kind of okay with this. Um, given the last year we've had fundraising and difficult. Number of visits have been down there. So I can, I can support eighteen. But also, I'm a little bit worried to circle back.
So if you add what the county has, has been donating to the tax levy that was implemented in twenty seventeen, that total is a hundred twenty-seven thousand. Twenty eighteen was a hundred twenty thousand. Twenty nineteen, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Twenty twenty, a hundred and twenty-three thousand. So I go along with Joe, um, when I voted for that tax levy, I assumed that would be their funding, and as their tax levy increases over the years, I do agree the county's supplemental funding should eventually get to zero. So if we're gonna leave eighteen thousand in there for now, with the idea we could circle back if we need to, I'm good with that. All right, so senior citizens, we've already discussed when we did the city request. Uh, we have a drainage commission that has a thousand dollars in there, and that is the Missouri River Sedimentation. Do we want to keep that thousand in there?
I think it's unfortunate that we continue that. Not a lot has been accomplished with, with that organization, lots of studying, but it's gonna have a substantial, um, effect to Yankton County as Lucy Court continues to fill with sediment. Our community more so than communities will be affected by it. We have to invest in looking at something to address it. It's taken longer than I would like, but I think we should continue to, um, put a thousand dollars into the Missouri Sedimentation and coal production.
I, I was on that board two years back, if we chose to get off of it, because there is no surrender. If you do it here, you've got a hundred and some other dams in the United States, you're gonna have to do it too, also. Where do you put it? You set it all down the rural lanes. If you get a, if you step in. So the view that we have the, the kids that keep looking at options. And you could sell more to it.
Well, I remember as a kid going up to Springfield, and that was all open water, and that has had a profound effect, you know, maybe as a people recreation and all that, and that's, it's moving this way.
You would get down to four hundred feet of water.
All right, so general consensus, one thousand.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that the problem, I think we're probably all about packing for that too. And I forgot to refresh my memory on it, but I think they're gonna be asking us for more this, by the end of this year as well as next year.
But, yeah, that's a discussion to have, to be, and done, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the planning and the phase is almost complete, and they're, they're actually gonna try to start doing something.
But that would have, you know, you wanna follow both brands or follow which is not a challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, as I.
There's a sediment reduction plan, at least the last one I listened, and it's not gonna solve the problem, but if they can give us fifty more years of tourism as opposed to, you know, the twenty-five we have now. Something to consider.
I'm okay with that, I just, I, for some reason, and now, well, they were gonna be asking for it, I guess. So now's the time to decide, I think, if we're gonna support that or not.
I think, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is just like a membership, you need to add organization, isn't it, like a thousand dollars? We're at a, we're, we're basically supporting the M Senate.
Well, if we don't have twelve thousand dollars in here, and they come in February, they ask for twelve thousand dollars, it's not pleasant, isn't it, I think? What I'm thinking. Whether it's for membership or not. They like, they like coming here in February, and they have a perfectly, a hundred percent favorable plan that we would support. Sure, and that's what the, 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 the. Okay. All right, I'm good with that.
All right, so next page is economic development, Y P G. Our current budget was twenty-five thousand, which we, we have requested be lowered from the fifth year. One year to twenty-five, then again for twenty twenty-one.
How many years is it, fifty-four? Four, eight, it was nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Or was it a five year?
I thought it was five.
Let's see, two hundred and fifty thousand obligation made on February seventh, twenty eighteen. Assume that started in Haiti, twenty nineteen. So it's five years, two hundred and fifty thousand. So one year is completely done, twenty nineteen. Twenty twenty would be the second year. So we essentially owe them two hundred thousand.
I suggest that if it was twenty-five thousand dollars and run it down to zero, move that twenty-five thousand dollars over to the domestic violence, which is only ten. We don't even have a law here. And the current economic condition of all the United States, uh, any county is all stood in toilets, so. That'd be better money spent on domestic violence, which is, huh, zero for nation. I think it's like that. I don't, I don't think we can afford the fifty thousand. Again, this is another one where I, I would like to have a presentation on, you know. This is, this is how the funding from the county was set this year. I, I at least don't know, and I don't know, uh, that would be, had gone it go to a certain program, where, where did it go and how did it affect economic growth was? You know, if they could say, you know, accomplish these and these projects, that's great. You know, certainly more economic growth, I think we need to support, um, Y P G, but we also need to have feedback from them on the, the many accomplishments, accomplishments, I'm sure they are doing. Um, this is tax dollars we're spending, and we need to be able to tell our constituents where that, where that dollar is going and how it's helping them. I guess I'd like to see that.
I think, I think they very easily do that, I guess after the question. What I'd suggest we do is, is, uh, I, I'd like to ultimately see us, we are. What I would suggest is we leave it at the twenty-five for this year. But then put it down at the end of the year, when we get our G O situation and everything, add the measure, make a definite agenda to address picking up twenty-five, we were, uh, they, at the end of the year. Westman, see me come in and talk about, uh, the same, the same thing with the problems. Some of it, uh, as I recall, was on the Westbrook Parks, which was housing needed in the area, and for youth and deaf people. I, I think the, 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 the. the Montmorel Field, that was, and they get four referrals from the state right now to look at businesses. It's tough to get, again, I think if the four that are currently on the agenda, they said three would look at one was a livestock processing plant, so we'd like to not look at that one. The other three, not very likely to recover. There's so many reasons they're out there from the state. They also spend money trying to get referrals from agencies that work. But right now it's stuff that that businesses anyways.
That is. I figured if not, these nonprofits need to be accountable for this kind of money of $25,000. For example, even the state of Nebraska requires receipts for child support, multi-payments. So I can't, somebody that gets $25,000 needs to be accountable for where is that money to be admitted to a nonprofit, YPG. People paying child support in Nebraska.
So 25,000, and at the end of this year, we need to have that conversation figured out to see if we can go ahead and make the full payment that was committed to 2018. So we'll either put 25,000 in that 2021 budget with the intent to always have the conversation at the end of the year. Moving on.
And I think this might have to be one of the ones that we circle back around to all the numbers to account expenses to.
So our next page is the operating transfer out. And this there is not a settlement, it depends on what we use to transfer to highway. So that's what will fluctuate. We have the 911 fund. Juvenile detention. So the emergency 911 fund, I have a red mark or an orange on professional services. We've been running like 135,000 and there's nothing on that line item. I don't know.
Well, that was the city, the one
Oh, gotcha. There we go. So do you try to fill that in? And this, that you sent out, perfect. And we don't have to talk about.
152, 656.
Well, no, she said she got that in.
I already put it before she did that.
Yeah. So that one should be fine. And domestic abuse, which is the 10,000. If I recall correctly, you don't have marriage licenses. I'm divorced.
Yeah.
Divorced.
Of course, and yes, the state gets that one.
Okay, so everyone's good with domestic abuse at 10?
If you look at
Can that go through?
We did about 6,000.
That goes through the, is it stolen shelter? Isn't there another shelter that opened up in Yankton that does for families and I thought there was No, I thought it was a different one, but I'm fine with it at 10,000.
So county buildings, this is a separate tax levy, separate from the general fund tax levy. So it's moved back to 60,000 because the balance in that fund dropped a little bit.
Yeah, because we don't want to get 20,000. It's going to drop. But we were already in red with budget for this year because of all the stuff with the coal, who had to build the coal.
And we're going to get reversed.
Yeah.
Will that move on to this one?
It was good for the general fund. So right now, 2019, at the end of 2019, county building fund was 228,000. At the end of May, it was down 166,000. So it probably is wise to move that back to the 60,000. Separate tax levy, again, this does not affect our general fund. This is separate. Everybody good with 60?
Yep. So that's effectively the change.
The county building.
It typically runs quite small, .33.
Yeah, I've got 3.3 cents of I don't know if that's what it's currently or if that's what requests the 60,000.
That's the 60,000.
So the next page is a historical preservation, which we would not control over. That's that separate levy as well. We have a debt service, which is a separate levy, and that is our payment for 2021.
And I just wanted to, and Mr. Rinsell, the taxes usually generate around 335,000 or more than that. The payment is 350,000 for the Lord's Mithy O2 from this. But they generate, you know, that much taxes and they, he wrote a letter and said that he wants the whole amount sent. So that's why the budget is higher. It's so I don't have to supplement.
So the entire amount that costs the county is 350,000 and that's what they're going to put in.
It doesn't cost the county anything.
Their their taxes are limited through 50,000 and they're supplementing that.
Their, the taxes collected are about 350, or their payment to the DOT is 330. And they generate four taxes.
Yeah, they generate six.
450?
On that page, that's the debt service for Napo Junction is the next page.
That, those pages.
Yes. Yep, that's the safety center is the 670.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And again, that will be paid off the last day for 25. So we don't have much room there on any of those. And we've got supplemental information. And I don't know if we really need to walk through the revenue. We walked through all of that last time. Does anybody have any changes other than the wheel tax that we need to discuss? And before we actually get to that, I think we need to go back to the commissioners because we did not talk about Boys and Girls Club or Yankton Transit yet. And that, I believe, comes out of the commissioners' budget. So currently, we have been giving the Boys and Girls Club 20,000. They did give their presentation that they do that. Team Court, and I believe if I punch my numbers right, and I'm trying to remember, it was like $200 per kid to try and keep them on the right path and what is it, juvie day in Sioux Falls is like 2:30 or something?
2:37.
2:37. So I guess my opinion, I think Team Court saves the county money in the long run if we can keep kids on a good path forward and not slip into other not so good paths.
Plus, this falls in the area of kind of like, you're referring to it with the senior citizens. A lot of these kids, you know, the meals that they get, they're either at school or the Boys and Girls Club are learning. They scratch from home. It's unbelievable, some stories and they're going, kids having a height. Their food bags, we can take them home. Parents, if the parents eat them. Those are the ones that we should get, parents.
The night that they had that presentation and it was up on the screen, this is just what I remembered, the food for the kids was about 1% of the budget and the wages and salaries were like 87%.
Quite hard, Ben.
And so, so who's, this is Boys and Girls Club, is it the Boys and Girls or is it the people working there for wage? Who's supposed to be done it, the employees or the kids?
You have to understand it.
I'm not understanding that you can have your own conversation. I'm just saying that 1% for food and 87% for wages.
If you were to put a value on the donor, if food, that 1%, it would actually go to
Talking about the volunteers, because what they spend on
So is there general consensus to keep that donation at 20,000?
My unit's gone there and they have this year because it's closed down and, you know, I agree it's 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 good for the community. I almost feel like I'm getting too big of a deal because I think it's like $20.
$25.
Yeah, and I would certainly be willing to pay more because I guarantee the meals one week costs more than that. And it's it's good in two ways. There is, it's good, you know, because it's affordable. I think it is good for the community. But I don't know if we could hate to go less, I know they're trying to build up their fund to self-funding. But I just, I don't feel, can we get along 20,000 forever? I don't, I don't. You know, I support the Boys and Girls Club, I think it's great. I certainly would be willing to pay more as a parent.
Unfortunately, I agree with the 25 dollars. It's a national, it's a national deal. I think they do ask that people pay more. Yeah. It's 25 dollars and then I don't think they turn money away if somebody
It's a good addition, it's a good addition to the county. I know it allows a lot, you know, people to be employed more. I guess I would like to more philosophical, but a lot of the businesses that, you know, employ the parents that couldn't work otherwise unless we had the Boys and Girls Club, it'd be nice. I'm sure there is some support, more support from them as well. It's a good organization.
I think
We make calls, asks almost every many, many people. For example, in one of my houses, I'm a forward pioneer. They gave their generous kind of you know, it's because they know that their workers hate some snow, but you can see the those little stuff holds up. And they're wandering around the streets and talking.
Well, I mean, like you said, they're getting nutritious meal and staying on.
I don't see a lot of difference in the center. I mean, the working age population has to take care of their kids. Kids are out there, they carry the trash. Just how it is.
That's very true.
Right. And so, I mean, the same argument could be made that maybe businesses should be, we should stop funding the center as much as make businesses funded, so people can work. I don't point as better. I can support that.
Okay, so Yankton Transit, 5,000 I think is what we give them now, and they certainly use that as matching funds, I know, for a good chunk of their other funding. Do we want to continue to buy that gets kids to school, it gets the post prescriptions, they even go out of, they go anywhere in the county.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll keep the five then, four then. So if we look at just the discretionary funding we talked about, in 2020, we had about 212,000 and in 2021, we have about 209,000. And the main cut was the airport. In fact, that was the only, that was the only change, was the airport.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, it's going to scare you, a couple dollars here and a couple there.
So things we have not, we have not really finalized. We didn't talk about most of the capital except for the bridge fund, of which we would contribute in last year. We did not discuss that. We have not discussed the final salary increase. Everything in here is 2.5%. At this time, do we want to tackle salaries? We need to finalize if we want to keep it 2.5 or if we want to pay that.
And I asked you previously, it's two and a half percent.
It's 132,000. And just
It's one dollar.
It's about 132,000 based on the wages we approved in January of 2020.
If you take your mask out, so the people out there that hear you, I can't hear you with that, that we do need a mask to get out. How much, 100,000 for raises?
One, three, two.
132,000 for two and a half percent rates for county employees, correct?
And that is a rough estimate, yes.
If we froze those for two years, we could say two and a half million, 450,000, quarter of a million.
So if that raise was moved to 2%, it would be 105,000. So it's about a $27,000 change. So just call it a $25,000 change for a half percent. And again, that is a rough estimate.
The CPI overall comes to 2.7.
Yeah, and the CPI is 1.7, so that is the cost every year that we incur just to live, 1.7%.
We took that 137,000 and gave some to the airport and gave some to the library and gave some to the senior citizen center and gave some to domestic abuse. Something like that, or somebody else. County employees would put some skin in the game about helping out their community because like I said before, when this COVID thing came, places like leagues business and lots of the business were closed. They were closed last year for the flood. They didn't reduce their property tax anymore. And everybody that's up in the valley, at home, they got paid. Or as I know, nobody got their wages cut. So I think the county employees, all of us included, need some skin in the game for using wages so that we've got this extra 137,000 to help out the senior citizens, the library, the airport, domestic abuse and whatever else we want. That's 137,000. If we do it for two years, it's all over a quarter of a million. We don't have to worry about chiseling a little bit away from the senior citizens and chiseling a little away from the airport.
I think how much we can save if we cut everyone's wage by 10%.
You can cut it, and I asked for a cut a long time ago from the commissioners, but you rejected that. I asked for a 10% cut in our wages to put it into the bridge fund, but you didn't want that. It seems like you finally did. You did last year. We froze our wages. We paid 10,000 a piece of off. We paid. Wasn't much skin in the game there. All the county employees did it for two years. We have enough to help the senior citizens. We have enough to help everybody else. But I guess if you have to have your raise to live, like I was giving the state's attorney how, because she wasn't here, but now she's here and I'm thankful that she's here. They all make about $80,000 a year, two and a half percent. Pretty easy to figure out. It's 2%. It's easy to figure out. Some people work at Just two percent, it's easy to figure out, some people work at Casey's and Walmart, don't make that increase in, in a year. So, uh, I think it's a slap in the face for the taxpayer to have to pay somebody that's making eighty thousand dollars a year times three, and the other employees. And, and not have their taxes, taxes reduced, and so that all the county employees that get paid, no matter if a rain shine, or if electricity goes off, or if there's a blizzard, they get sent home with pay. And it's a real slap in the face, and I think people just, you don't have any, any empathy whatsoever. Uh, you know, uh, you know, Hitler was on meth for seven years before he killed himself, and they say that we work with the law enforcement, that people on meth have no empathy. I don't know if the shoe fits, wear it, but, boy, I tell you that, you've got to, you've got to give these people some relief. A two and a half percent raise, sure, it's nice. Uh, I went one year, five years, my whole company did, because they follow same trucks, we had five years of term raise, and then things got better, so. Go ahead and give everybody a big fat raise and. Slap the taxpayers in the face.
All right, so other, other thoughts? The state was two percent, and so we can either do a percentage, we can do a flat rate, everybody gets the same raise, or we can do some kind of a combination.
I'd suggest if you do, which you truly will, but flat rates better because when you get something like an eighty thousand, something like a twenty five or thirty thousand, the gap starts to spread even more.
There's a reason.
Yeah, well, you, you think they're more important, well, maybe they are, maybe the guidance claim is more, the COVID nineteen is more important than you and I are. Uh, Deb, I also asked for the few people on these with your name on it, because people watching this and complaining that they don't know who you are, I introduced you one time. And, and you're the new assistant state's attorney, I understand, and you need to tag name, tag over this too. I think we can afford a piece of wood with a name on it. Angry, no, not angry, I'm just disappointed in all of you. Disappointed that you feel that your raise, your county employees' raise is more important than the working people, people paying your wages is more important. I'll tell you enough guilt trip on you, I don't know if it's a lot of work on you.
Okay, so we're gonna let the other commissioners speak now.
I support a two point five percent increase. At least, uh, there need to be, there have all the people that we have, definitely, employed and employed of your, and you would have to do marketing for those people. It's not about the wages, it's about the services that we provide for the community. If we lose existing, all, uh, capable, efficient employees, uh, the services will dramatically go without.
Any thoughts?
What would, uh, a flat fee listeners issue, should you have something in mind, uh, that would be? Roughly, a quarter of a month to the, what was it, a hundred and?
Thirty two?
Yeah, what, what, what would that be, as a, as a flat fee for, because I, I do understand, uh. Widening of the pay gap, um, as well, and I, I'd also explore that and see what that would be, you know. As, as a measure of, you know, probably a dollar an hour or less than that.
Well, fifty thousand dollars. If you're talking about, uh, hundred sixty, we have a hundred and sixteen employees, a hundred and twenty employees, a hundred and fifty, a thousand, a thousand dollars a employee, that's more. Yeah, but a flat, a flat, a flat rate. Me as an Osan, they're crazy, you know.
Why is that down?
A flat rate, everybody gets the same. Why is it good reward for your people that are, that have here that have done the job excellently versus the person that showed up? I don't think we have the, the show up. And ones that's prepped themselves in life to afford, uh, new education, new skills, they should be rewarded for that.
I agree with that, with the stipulation that Amber wants. Okay, yeah, let's say Amber goes to three to five dollars. That's a hard number, it doesn't go up two dollars for this person that gave it out. And it only goes up a dollar for the acting board, so. I, I would support a blended. A blended raise, we're in a capitalistic system. We're poor. Yeah, I think that, I think that it hurts, yeah, guilty. That, that method. When you get towards lower end, I've seen it in manufacturing, I've seen it everywhere. And everyone's always searching for a little bit more, and it hurts. The people who are just getting that two percent on lower wage to hook for other jobs, that. The other side of it too is what I see happening, if you, as, as, uh. Economy grows, as it gets harder and harder to pay people, or find workers, you end up bringing in workers. With the same wage as that person who was at the bottom rung, that just paid that two percent over and over, or you lose some of the money. You can't more out of the workforce. You can only do that for so long, no. I mean, I, I, I agree, uh, but. I just feel. That I, I've seen it over and over, where somebody's in a position for fifteen years, and they've gotten that two and a half percent with a little bump here and there. And person starving is made for the same job, because that's what makes it difficult to go on. So I'd rather pay a little more and keep somebody than, than, uh, buy them the street.
That's really common in the nursing field this year, that nurses with twenty five years' experience, they tend to get a new one, so. That's, that's tough.
You should have started an outlay. I mean, you don't get, when you first start, you don't get the top wage. I mean, there's, we have the stuffs.
Yeah. What's your blended system, what do you think?
You said you're gonna break it down wages, I just, I had to average them, I think you just do. Have we, have we engaged, uh, HR personnel in one of the phases that we asked of them, was to look at our, our salary program?
That is the next step, we have not approved any expenditure for that, but I would like to get that done before the end of the year, so that when January rolls around. When we go to approve those new salaries, we can make our adjustments there.
Yeah, and those are, those, that's the rationale that should be able to, better see in the direction, uh, which is more fair and favorable for all.
Yeah, we would certainly like to have them look at, um, our step program and all of that, because there's a lot of concerns across all departments about that, meaning adjustments.
I would suggest, uh, say, to Dave's discussion. Except the, the two and a half, or the one, the two or the one, the one that's put a rate in, and again, say, this is dependent upon, uh, whether the restation, we, HR. The salary.
Well, you can't, you have to, the raises have to be done before September. Because that's when we improve the annual budget. And that's within the annual budget.
Yeah.
And then.
I think whatever we approve today will, we could likely stick with, uh, the way to study.
And then pick out the people who are really misaligned with the way to study and adjust their specific salaries.
Thanks, Peter, at, at that timeline, for that.
That's, that, that. The people who, uh, are getting, um, raises in a, aside from the increase, are they going to get their raise in the proposed, uh, two or two point five percent increase? Or they get the proposed at this point?
That's how we just, I get into the point of time.
Just got a question, but you said, you said something about that, when somebody started, say, started at a low wage.
Yeah.
What you said. Yep. Is that the situation with you, did you start, you started at a low wage and then worked your way up? Or did you just come in with a flat offer of some money dollars for your job?
It de, it depends.
It's what?
It depended on how much yours was experienced, I was proud of it.
So, so you're, you're basically getting the same wages of the person you replaced?
I am, but one of the others is not.
But I'm talking about you, yeah, so you're getting the same exact wage as the person on the left here that had been here for fifteen years.
Correct, but I, I am, but that, that depends too on.
Well, see, that's, 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 that's all. But you were talking about the blended.
But I had ran this, I found basically the average sal, average hourly wage or salary. And put one percent to that, and then a one percent raise, I think, I think the one percent was four hundred and fifty dollars. Increase for everybody in the top people, it's not near one percent, the bottom people are gonna give more, one percent. And then, look at, like, a hundred percent, it is across the board. Right.
I don't have that, I think it was four hundred and fifty now.
That's what I had to do. Then averages to about two percent across the board.
You know, one concern I have, you mentioned it always, that people at the lower end, uh.
Sure they are, they're adapted in every industry. You get rewarded for working hard and advancing and. Yeah, I mean, the problem is to these three go. And the colors of the capitalist society, the capitalist society. So supposedly everybody gets the same except those.
All right. You keep bringing up this capitalistic society. This is government. This is not a populistic society right here.
This is government. You know, workers have.
Government. So government, oh, you take the tax of people. This is when you worked at the firm credit, did the many people pay into your company that paid your wages? No. So you're not the same. You're talking about different things.
We're far from. From a large corporation, but I mean, just to extrapolate that thought process is the CEO running a failing company. Getting a few bonuses and that same percentage increase year over year. Does he work that much harder and that much smarter than the? The person. Put an end on shoelaces at some point. So what 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 kills me kills when they get severance package when they get fired. Right, by years or ten years. Right, for getting fired. Yeah, I can't tell if they're bankruptcy and they'll get all this the whole time. It's. And that's where, I mean, I I think hard work should be rewarded, but I I do see every now and then where things get out of hand.
I I like your idea of your.
It's not something I probably would do every year, but. But my thought process was do that this year and then hopefully we do that dual wage, true wage setting. Future. Compared to where. Where employees' positions are. You know, I think in the past, I I don't know if the department head would be three in a budget in time, but I several department heads. And I asked them, you know, they feel okay with that. Taking an increase and putting that forward through their staff. Hard work and that idea, I guess. So let's ask the other question. There are how many? How many other attorneys were applying for the jobs as a good question? Gary. Very recent.
Probably one.
So actually, I know the answer.
Yeah.
It's closer to zero.
Yeah.
There's search for almost a year.
That's been kind of a common trend that I'd seen. While I was doing that up in Brown also is that, yeah, it is getting harder and harder.
Well, help me to get ready.
That is one of the trends that I've seen the last few years that you are giving less and less applicants. Especially for for some of the specialized fields. But even like highway workers or our landfill workers. Yeah, we we got two qualified people that could run heavy equipment. It was it was rare. I just most of the time if you got one or two, you're in good shape. Whereas, you know, if it's a position where you get a nice bump from a fifteen dollar hour job to a twenty dollar hour hour job, like for a. Deputy at a certain office or something, then you would get a a pair of my applicants, you know, those would make sense. But but overall, that is a challenge. It was a life. It is.
It is.
And one of the things that we did up there, talking about this salary change, we did rotate every year between cents and percentages up there. So that falls all the way into the spectrum would would get a different place every other year. We get that regular field. Yeah, good. Thank you.
I I kind of think there is a big point in going back and forth, but I don't know. Blended approach. Makes sense.
So if those numbers checked, I guess, we're accurate, I think it was four. If we effectively did two percent, it'd be us four hundred fifty dollars for everybody, and then everybody would get one percent on top.
And you also have to take these apart time for them. You only work like 10 hours a month or 20 hours.
Right.
So I think that is closer around two percent doesn't make change. Cent's an hour raise for part time. And one percent. It's a flat four fifty. Yeah. After that, fifteen cents an hour plus the one percent. So I guess how you calculate that is if you are 10 bucks an hour, you add one percent and then you add fifteen cents on top. Done for now. So that's a two point five percent.
So the manager from the employee standpoint is if you're a highly qualified person. You're going to save yourself. I I know people that were silver price index and go on the joke over there. She was up late 15 minutes after day and leaves on the shuttle three hours and he gets. She was getting fired.
You know, with those people, if they have that behavior, whether you give a percentage or a flat rate, doesn't matter. It's basically it's still a problem. They're still getting raised for performance.
Correct.
Whether it's percentage or flat rate.
That's what we need. A program, a picture. I think a lot of even in private ends, we've gotten away from reporting. So it'd be everyone to seek to get the same raise. Because it's easier and you don't have conflict and you don't have to hire a supervisor that's gonna. I mean, it's not just government. I think the way ours was was standard grades. Anything made good reference and I was totally. Sure.
Oh, we are doing a little bit of that, too. There are some employees that, you know, distinguish themselves or have voluntarily taken more responsibility on. And we are recognizing them and raising their wages. So I think we are trying to do, yeah, there are some, you know, that work really hard and, you know. We are doing some of that as well. For for some.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's kind of.
That's what I'm saying at this point. Well, yeah.
If we had delayed some requests, I'll decide on four by people because of this discussion.
So what do we want to do? Do we want to do we want to go ahead and do a blended or do we want to stick with percentage this year and maybe just go a flat rate next year? Like Gary was saying Brown County does. I'm looking for, don't want to make it too complicated. For everyone to calculate.
Well, we just said there are five hours a week.
Kind of tough, so. Yes, in my opinion, if we're going to go consider flat, I would like to do all flat, one year percent. Next year, if you're going to go down that half just for sheer calculation purposes. So you could propose a flat rate and then get these back for the party. So to do. I would discourage that. I think we need to bite the bullet and make our decision. So I guess I would be a pro point to stick with the percentage this year. Do a salary survey, identify those people. There might be some people who need a fifteen hundred bump just because they are so misled with current competition. And now maybe some people who are pretty healthy in their wage for what they do. And then next year for 2021 to consider addressing those.
Right, and I like your name this program. Cover miles of. Drop them with tires. People in line.
You can have it up there. I shared that with Don during the break. The company that I ran home and I got was that one company to take care of all of our equipment. Everything was speech, individual piece of equipment, each individual vehicle had its own sheet. What was purchased, what was new. And I suggested to Don, the buddy's gonna take the lead on that because I could go in and I could punch in vehicle number three, seven, one. Purchase mileage, transmission replaced, engine, whatever, oil changed tires. I called from one of my texts one day, he said blew the transmission out of my vehicle. I said, well, I'll get it towed off, get it towed in. Well, next day I got a call from the supplier that I designated for all of our repairs, like what Don's gonna do. And he said, I got good news and bad news for you, Gary. So what? Where the laundry? He said, the good news is that that vehicle is still under warranty because we replaced the transmission in it. So so like, but the bad news is is it's deductible. I said, how much is it done deductible? Hundred bucks. That's better than the thirty seven hundred. You're gonna have to spend. Now, if we go on to some other place or anybody else, that would have been on the books. So Don's gonna take the lead on that and he's gonna get this all set up so that we save all kinds of money. But thanks, Don. No pressure, Don. I'll hold your fire, but feet to the fire.
So the numbers before us right now, we have a CPI of one point seven. Overall, we are at two point nine available to increase our budget this year. The state just gave a two percent raise to their employees, so where do we want to end up?
Where's one point seven CPI?
CPI is one point seven. And then we had.
What did we do last year?
We had a two last year.
Oh, it's two. Was it two or was it?
Two point two.
Two point two. I believe last year the state gave no raises.
You was CPI was.
No, because we were at three point one last year for total. And now we're two point nine.
Oh, yeah, but CPI was just CPI and you're all busy.
Yeah. It's CPI.
Yeah. CPI is here one point seven. I I could do.
Other thoughts?
I'll make a compromise. I said that we should increase the wages for two years for the county employees. Okay, a hundred thirty seven thousand dollars each year to pay for the senior citizens. Domestic violence, library, everything else. I'll compromise with a one year freeze. So we could bring thirty seven thousand dollars to help all these other library, forage, boys and girls club. We can help them all with a hundred and thirty seven thousand. There is not, but you and I went to law school. You want million bucks, yes, two million, right? That's what my teacher taught me.
I did not. Sorry.
You know, that my group just taught me, he's got three law degrees, he just needs.
Don or Dan, do you have comments?
Absolutely, Don.
I support you.
Dan?
You know, I'm I'm torn here. I certainly support the wages at two percent, but. Also, you know, we we have great employees and I I we've got to do everything we we can do to. Retain them. And I don't know. If I need to go a little bit higher than two percent, I. I don't, I know times are tough and, you know, we had proposed two and a half. I from the feeling and from everybody, we can't go two and a half. And I understand and expect that. Two point two last year. Go. Do that again this year. I don't know. I I. I support a raise as far as two percent. It's impossible we can get our employees a little bit more.
See, I mean, to see off of that, if you'll get going two point two percent, that is essentially taking into account CPI and it splits the goal. How many keeps half and we skip.
We just need to keep up, you know, we just need to keep. Up because if. You know, everything's constant more and more and more. We're not keeping up with that. The real wages that employees are earning. It's outpaced by the cost of everything, you know, mentioned five, six dollar hamburger. Look at what a new new house costs anymore. A used house, a pretty not, well, Gary knows this a house not in very good shape, it's two hundred thousand dollars anymore and.
So we do still have time at the end of the year to adjust it if we. If we get a bunch of people to pay their taxes in October, we'll be adjusting a lot of things. We, the farmers will have to redo their budgets also. Boy, I need enough time for that to get most of that. Before September. So is it two or two point two?
I, well, two point five based on what what I said. Why don't we stick with the two point five? So our heads don't have to, we'll do all that work. We can adjust it down. If that's what we can do after we get a total budget recorded.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, I'll be going with that.
Upper discussion later then. If needed. All right, so we did discretionary, we did salaries, we kind of touched on the capital. And we have wheel tax on our agenda as well. Let's just make it five minutes because we're already twenty to one. I have a motion to take a five minute break.
Sure.
So Dan, you made the motion? Okay, so Dan made the motion for a five minute break and Don seconded, all in favor?
All right.
Bye, all course nay. Motion carries. I miss. That the question has come up, is it a majority vote or is it a formal requirement? And kind of wheelchair says thirty two dash five A is the statute. I didn't, I did not see that it had to be a super majority. So I'm assuming it's just a majority.
I have a question. And then when does that take effect?
It's gotta be published and then takes it back to your publication section.
Yeah, how long? Shorter than what?
What was the statute? Thirty two five A. Everybody might turn your mic on, we should go back into session. I would entertain a motion to go back into session.
Oh, okay.
I have a motion in the second to go back into budget discussions, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all course nay. Motion carries, we're now back in session. On the agenda is county wheel tax discussion. Uh, it is. Thirty two dash five A is the South Dakota laws surrounding that. So at this time, the county imposes a four dollar wheel tax on four wheels. In the county. We are allowed to go to five dollars on up to six. Twelve wheels. This is a sixty dollar maximum. I know this for real up to.
Up to twelve wheels.
Oh. This is outdated here.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, is it is proven where, where I'm concerned. Uh, I've talked to other people and myself included. I've got a semi that puts $10 on it a year on. It's not running 8, 12 hours a day, day in, day out. So that would be one, I guess, argument against it. The other, the other argument I have against that I have is that's, this is a big permanent pass increase. I, I would support more of the, I have, that, as it said on the, this is interesting. But I would like to see at least the $5 for our, our big school.
So the last time I pulled it out, November 8th, 2016, the wheel tax failed 53% to 47%, so it was very close. That one went $5, four wheels, so we went to the $60. So with this one, if we went just $4 to $5 and kept the four wheels to try it, um, maybe folks would be more open to it. I, I know it's only gaining us about $113,000, but it's $113,000 more than we had before.
So then we only have to go with it?
Yeah.
Well, I, I know again, I'm, I'm almost done. It's been a do-it. It's, it's proven that, you know, and, and people, people realizes that the heavy trucks are causing the majority of the damage. And to ask, the little old lady who drives her car once a month in town, maybe only puts 5,000 miles on a year. For her to pay the same amount as a semi truck, to, in my opinion, isn't, isn't fair.
I'll just play devil's advocate.